All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty five special council meeting. Tonight, our topic is the budget with some couple of reports in between. We're going to go ahead and start tonight with the invocation given by Councilmember Dunn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together as a community to speak of and to listen and to plan for the things that come ahead. We are grateful for this color, change of the season and what it means to us. We look forward to the days ahead. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we're gonna have things this next time. Quite the scene. All right, we'll go ahead with roll call. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy. All right, all the present and accounted for. We are up to agenda approval. Are there any requested changes? Not hearing any?
Mayor, I'll make one motion to add council comments to seventeen point five, I guess it would be, or sixteen point five. Let's do sixteen point five.
Okay. Any more color to that?
No.
Okay.
You mean emergency organist?
No, just opportunity for council comments at sixteen point five.
All right, okay, we have a second.
Second.
The second by Councilmember Spencer. Those in favor of adding council comments that between sixteen and seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Anybody else?
Yearning none will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Spencer. Those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. We are up to citizen comments. So this is the time of evening. Most everybody here is staff, but not everybody. If we have anybody in chambers who'd like to make a citizen comment, we have white sheets over on the table by the door. If you'd fill that out and get them to Kyle at the end of the table, he'll get it to me. Time limit is three minutes. If there's anybody online who'd like to make a citizen comment, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat feature. And if we have anyone sign up, I'll finish going through the rules, but I won't waste time if we don't. I don't see anybody here in chambers. Is there anyone online? Okay, just remember we'll have another opportunity for citizen comments later in the meeting. We have no announcements, proclamations, special presentations. So that brings us to reports and inquiries. Are there any city council reports from last week to today? All right, not hearing any. I don't have anything additional to report. And city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, just a reminder that tomorrow is Veterans Day, and so in observance, the library and City Hall will be closed, and then we'll be back in action on Wednesday, the twelfth. And we have a presentation that Lee's going to queue up very quickly to get our budget conversation started. I wanted to give a very high level summary in the context of our priority based budgeting methodology, and so we will get that queued up here and underway.
So that's it for your administrator report?
After the after the summary, yes.
Okay, all right. I thought maybe you were going to roll that into the workshop part.
Mark, do we need to follow along in here or?
It's up to you. It's going to be projected onto the screen with some information that you can follow along on the screen. I don't believe what I'm going to show you is in your binder explicitly. There we go. So you can go ahead and go to the next slide, Lee. So at a very high level, and this will help to queue up the conversation that Kyle is going to lead, starting during the workshop. And so really what I wanted to let everyone know is that by alignment with our strategic plan, you can see how the two thousand and twenty five budget is allocated to the programs that are most, more, less, and least aligned with our strategic plan. And so from a nineteen point nine million dollar total budget and not one hundred percent of our complete budget is reflected in priority based budgeting, but the majority of it is. And so in two thousand and twenty five, nineteen point nine million is. And so you can see there that roughly seventy six percent of our budget is aligned with our strategic plan in programs where it is either most or more aligned. And so as we move through the rest of the discussion tonight, keep these kind of generally in mind. Lee, you can go to the next one. What does that mean? What is most, more, less, and least mean? If you'll recall, we spent several meetings at the earlier months of the year profiling programs, and we tried to profile those that were most and more aligned, just to give you a sense of where the majority of investment was going and what the return on that investment was going to look like. And so this is just an example. These are samples of programs that are in each of those quadrants. We have close to sixty total programs in our inventory. What you see here reflected on the screen are sixteen of those in four in each quadrant. And you can see the general breakdown of the allocations, and these are expressed in thousands. So the call response in most aligned is one million, one hundred and eighty six thousand and something. And as you go, that's the same pattern for each of those lines. So you can see just an example of some of the programs that are in each of those quadrants. Next slide, Lee. If you want to look at this by fund, same total, you can see the breakout by fund there. General fund is by far the highest leveraged fund, and you can see the others going down from highest to lowest there. If you want to look at this in another way, next slide, Lee. You get a essentially general fund and everything else. So general fund is about fourteen and a half million. Everything else is almost five million. Next slide, Lee. Now, what does that mean for two thousand and twenty six? So as we start talking about the two thousand and twenty six budget, the preliminary draft you have in front of you in the binder, we have requests that have been made by the department heads that constitute figures that you will see in line items, in departments, in funds as we go throughout the the budget. And so not everything that is an increase or decrease in the two thousand and twenty six budget came through by way of requests. For example, the collective bargaining agreement that just was approved at the last meeting is not reflected in a budget request. That's something that is outside of the request process. Another example is the cost of living allowances that are programmed into the budget. Those are administered outside of the budget request process. But some of the just context, what we try to do with the budget request is to give directors an opportunity to put requests in for things that were either going to supplement a program, grow a program, potentially shrink a program, adding staff, adding equipment, adding resources, changing volumes of service delivery, changing quality of service delivery, changing efficiency. Those are the kinds of things that you would expect to see show up in these budget requests. And you can see of the total, six hundred and forty four thousand that came through the budget request process, approximately seventy one percent of those are either most or more aligned or in programs that are most or more aligned with our strategic plan. Next slide, Lee. And this is just a high level look at those. You'll see these as we go through and have the discussion about the budget, but following the same color scheme, and the reason the color scheme is the color scheme is because that's what it is in Resource X. And so I want everybody to get used to that. So when you start seeing these graphics, it makes more sense. It just translates it for you. So the lighter purple is the more aligned, the deeper purple is most aligned, the blue is less aligned, and then you'll see in the next page, there's some teal in there that's least aligned. So you can see from top to bottom, there are these requests that are made that have been tentatively approved and included in the preliminary budget. And you see what the request is, what program it's associated with, and what the dollar amount. And again, these are expressed in thousands, and you see some offsetting decreases there. So you'll get a net effect at the end, which is the six hundred and forty four thousand. And Lee, if you can go to the next slide.
Real quick, Mark, I just shot a note to Kyle. If we're going to send this out, we're going to make better notes as the whether these are thousands or whatnot, because it can get a little confusing. Thanks.
And so in the on the second page of these, you see the rest of them, and the net approved increases are six hundred and forty four thousand dollars. Again, these are all in your budget binders within the various fund departmental line item budgets. And so we would expect you to ask questions about these as we go through, and department heads are here and prepared to answer what return on investment each of these requests is projected to deliver. I believe that is the last slide, Lee. You can go to the next one. And so really, I just wanted to set the stage for the workshop by giving you that high level information in the context of priority based budgeting. And now, if you want to ask any questions about that, feel free. If not, we will roll into the workshop.
Any questions for Mark? Mayor Pro Tim?
So, Mark, just a overall question here. Am I reading this correctly on the budgets for two thousand and twenty six proposed? And then, again, this is just top line numbers here. Thirty, page thirty. The grand total we're expecting for revenue is twenty one point four. And the grand total that we are on the next page, thirty one, proposing to spend is thirty three point nine.
So you started with page thirty, is that correct?
Page thirty, which has the summary by revenue and total at the bottom, grand total for all funds, twenty one point four. And then I'm looking at the next page where it says grand total for all funds for expenditures, thirty three point nine.
Correct.
So and hopefully, we're going to talk a little bit more about this, but those numbers obviously are thirteen million dollars in difference. I guess my question is where are we getting those extra dollars from?
Beginning balances for the most part.
So we're just taking from the beginning balance or the?
In some cases, yes. And as we go through fund by fund, those deltas and the coverage of those deltas will be explicitly part of that conversation. Kyle, do you want to add?
Yeah, so we're covering that difference in cash.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Just a follow up question to that. Kyle, is that what we normally do?
It has been. We have contemplated all sorts of different revenue models, financing, but historically, we have cash funded our capital improvements.
And if you look at the last, you know, last year's two thousand and twenty five budgeted grand total revenue, twenty four point six, twenty five adopted, thirty five. So it's that's how things work when you have capital funds.
Right, and obviously, part of that delta is that we're obviously we're allocating a hundred percent of the of the expenses. We're contemplating every department spending every last dime of budgeted allocations, which historically is not the case.
Anybody else on that? Okay. All right, so do we want to do we want to go through high level and go through the items that Mark specifically highlighted in that presentation and get into the more details after that? Or do we want to go through page by page like we have before? And if we do that, I want to make sure people are asking questions at the time. Last year, we went through all these pages, and nobody really asked any questions or had any changes. They went going back to the beginning and doing that again. We don't want to run into that, you know, do this as efficiently as possible. And if there's requested changes or questions, hit them when we are on that on that page. So it's up to you guys how you want to tackle this. Go ahead. Mike.
I personally would have a challenge with that because as we go through this, it's very natural as we go on, suddenly that brings a question, something that was prior.
Oh, and that's fine. But what happened last year is we went through the whole thing, and then we kind of went back to the beginning and then asked questions. So if we get later on, and that brings up a question from before, I get that. But we kind of got through the whole thing and really didn't take any action or anything last year. Councilmember Dunn?
I appreciate the line by line as it has notes specific to the budget action. Mark's presentation was great. I'm trying to recognize topics, I'll call it, or categories of the expense as well as their alignment, but the notes provide some real context as to specifically what the items are. So yeah, line by line.
Anybody opposed to that? All right, then I guess we will dig in. So Mayor Pro Tim started with the revenue and expenses on page thirty and thirty one. Just remember, those are summaries. We'll get into the detail on that. So I'm hoping that really, you know, at this level, we don't have any questions on those two pages as we'll get into the line by lines. Page thirty two is the salary schedule. Are there any specific questions on the salary schedule? Councilmember Ball.
Unsettled, unsettled, unsettled.
Oh.
Yeah, why are they unsettled?
So those will be coming back in the form of a updated contract. So for chief and DC and lieutenant, all of the non bargain PD on the heels of adopting the labor agreement, they are non bargain. So they have separate contracts. And so everything kind of cascades upward. So we'll see on the next, on the next agenda for November eighteenth, those contracts.
Okay, and then what about for the city administrator?
Similarly, so the wages will still fall within his range, but we'll bring that back once those discussions with the leadership of the PD come back as well.
So they're budgeted?
Yes, they are budgeted.
As if they're going to be approved, but.
Correct.
Okay, who was first?
Dan.
Councilmember Dunn.
So at a high level, full time employees, ninety seven, part time, ninety four, excuse me, fourteen. Is that a change, increase, or decrease from last year?
That's a two, so a full time two increase from last year. We have one. We have one proposed for additional commissioned officer, and then we have one proposed for additional full time golf operations staff.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim.
This is a question I asked to do with this page, and then later on in the budget as well. Five point seven on the step, or excuse me, on the COLA, and then a two percent step for everyone or just certain positions?
So all non bargained.
Okay, so it's really.
Non bargain, non contract.
Seven point seven for everybody in the city.
Correct.
And how did we come up with those numbers?
So it's two point seven percent COLA, three percent adjustment based on light comparisons, and then a two percent step.
Can you say that one more time, Kyle?
So two point seven percent cost of living adjustment, and then we do annual evaluations against our peers as well. And so the decision was made to have a three percent adjustment on top of that. And then the step is your range, the individuals' range within their position. There's there's ten steps in that range. And so upon satisfactory employment review, they'll advance one step, and that's equal to two percent.
And a reminder, we talked, I had mentioned during the presentation, in order to get back where we are with our peers, it was really about a six percent, but we knew we couldn't.
Correct.
We couldn't afford that, so we chose to put in a half of that this year. And Councilmember Kurtz, which peers are we looking at? Which cities?
So we looked at through the, we have access to the Association of Washington Cities Salary Survey, and that's done on an annual basis. And so we looked at Moses Lake, Walla Walla, Spokane Valley, Cheney, Airway, Spokane County. And there may have been some others that I'm not recalling off the top of my head, but we can get you the full list of comparables.
Like Eastside, somewhere around here, same size-ish.
Yes. Pullman was another one that we looked at.
Okay, Councilmember Ball.
So Mayor, you said six percent, but this adds up to seven point seven.
No, so so in order to right size our salary ranges, in order to get back with those peers, it would have been six percent. We only put in three percent. So three percent for the right sizing and two point seven cost of living. That's the five point seven. Okay. Councilmember Spencer.
Question on the same issue. So six percent would bring us where in comparison to those peers?
It depends on the peer. Yeah, it depends on the peer, depends on the job. I mean, generally speaking, if you looked at all of those peers, there in some job classifications, we were significantly behind at all points of the spectrum. Some, we were less behind in the lower steps, more behind as you graduated through the scale. So it really just depends on position and comparable benchmark.
What, to follow up to that, what type of attrition have we had so far, especially on those particular positions that are supposedly super far behind?
Define attrition.
People leaving to go to the other cities.
Up to this point, minimal.
Okay.
Anybody else on salary schedule? Okay. Next pages are the the draft ordinance. It's pretty boilerplate year to year. Kyle, were there any significant changes?
On?
The ordinance.
No, nope, boilerplate.
Then we get into, here we start flipping things around. Hold on. Any questions on the couple of charts coming through? I always like this visual to see where things are coming from and where they are going. Do you have any questions on thirty five or thirty six? Not hearing any. Okay. All right, back to portrait mode. The next thing is our budget process document pages thirty eight through, I think it ends it. There we go. Anyway, so the rest of that section through forty five, are there any questions on the budget process policy document? Not hearing any? Right?
Oh, go ahead. Your mind, I'd already asked.
Okay, all right, general funds, next section, yellow. All right, so remember, as we get into this, for example, page forty is a summary of, well, you got the the pages that look like this, the ones that are portrait, are a summary of the following pages. So there are some notes on here, more detailed notes on the landscape facing pages. So if you have any questions on the summary pages, the questions should be answered in those line items. So we'll just we'll go ahead and start with legislative. That was not.
And I'll jump in on legislative just for an update. And so what we have for so the salary commission met a handful of times in late October and November. And so they do kind of a very similar analysis of like cities. Their statistical pool is Washington Cities between ten and thirty thousand dollars with a ten and thirty thousand population with a strong mayor council form of government. And so we populate those increase. So I analyze the AWC salary schedule for any increases. And there were a handful. Salary Commission tells me which ones to consider. And as a result of that, they had a public hearing last Friday, and they voted unanimously to increase compensation for both council members and mayor at seven percent. So right now, it's eight eighty. That's going to increase to nine forty for council members. I believe it's twenty six seventy five for the mayor. That'll increase to twenty eight sixty five.
So what's in the budget isn't, we need to update that.
Correct. So I'm going to update, I'm going to update what's in here, because obviously, this was presented to you prior to them making that determination.
Any questions about the salary commission process? Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
The effect of our page forty eight and the third salary range of council member salaries said the salary commission anticipated five percent increase the very next page. The salary commission set mayor salaries, district salaries, five point seven increase plus two percent second. So it's not, apparently, it's not the same both council and mayor's position.
So that'll be corrected in the budget. So the so the salary is already been established by the salary commission. And so that's seven percent for both council members and the mayor. And so our updated budget binder will will need to be reflected to to reflect that.
Yeah, an executive also includes other people.
Right.
Yeah. So that's a correction.
Correct, yep.
Any other questions on the salary commission controllable items, Councilmember Ball?
Well, I did have a, I was curious, because under legislative benefits, we don't get benefits.
No, but.
So those are smaller things like payroll taxes and things like that. And so.
Washington cares and all that stuff.
Oh, 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 oh.
A tiny, tiny amount for L and I and things like that.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on that? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
A quick question about the hearing examiner costs.
What page are you on?
I'm still on general fund one legislative forty eight, page forty eight.
Okay, thanks.
We are taking it down, it looks like, next year to fifty five eight. We had it adopted this year at sixty four, six, five, zero because of what I believe to be a lot of politically based ethics charges that were put out there. So I guess my question is, why are we, why are we anticipating that going down?
So we would anticipate that those costs would not continue to occur. If we're specific to call it a one off investigation, we wouldn't anticipate those continuing.
But note here says it increases for hearing examiner costs.
So the recent increases for hearing examiner costs, apologies for the wording, that explains why you would see those increases in prior years. So I can fix that wording.
Okay. Yep.
Wasn't there a change in the interlocal agreement too with regard to the costs on the hearing examiner services?
There, yes, there was. The the hope is that we obviously aren't continuing to utilize those services at the rate that we.
Right, but just from a standpoint of the rate itself, the hearing examiner, that went up.
Yes.
Right.
You're still noodling, so I'm going to give you a minute. Okay, just wanted to check. Sure, all right. Any other questions on legislative? Hey, next, we are up to executives. So again, there's some summary here, but if we jump to page fifty on the line item detail, that's the probably the best place to start. So as we go down through these line items, does anybody have any questions on page fifty of the legislative section? Go ahead, Mary.
Not a question, but more of a, just a brief comment about services and charges. I mean, just in the past two years, we've more than doubled the services and charges, two and a half years, beg your pardon. We've more than doubled the services and charges that we're that we're having in this fund. And I know some of that has to do with the software that we are getting, but is that the, I mean, it looks to me like there's three different, excuse me, four different pieces of software that we are putting in here for this year, Zen City, website, priority based budgeting, budgeting. And I I guess it was three, I beg your pardon. So I, is that all the majority of it? Is just those three softwares?
Correct, yep.
All right, any other questions on legislative? And we'll just include page fifty one since it's a short section. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
One more real quick. So the the placer AI was what we were using to replace GSI, right?
Potentially.
Or to replace the economic development.
Yeah, yes.
So that was, it looks like right here, that the cost of that is going to be twenty thousand dollars, and then we're still going to do the GSI membership on tap on top of that, which is twelve. So now, instead of paying twenty five, which is what we were paying previously, we're going to be paying thirty two?
That, yeah, that's what's contemplated in the budget, yes. That, yeah, that's what's contemplated in the budget, yes, so.
Somebody want to speak to Placer AI and what we're using it for and over and above?
Right, there's no cost increase associated with, with Placer AI. The membership fee for the economic development, for being part of the ADO is based on, in some parts, population and, and some parts, other services, I want to say it's eleven thousand, five hundred or something to that effect. And so there may be some other nominal appropriations in here or allocations in here rather, but those two items, to my knowledge, are not increasing in cost from twenty-five to twenty-six.
I'm so last year, actually the previous year, we changed it last year. We took out the economic development portion for GSI, which dropped us down to the twelve thousand dollar membership for GSI. Originally, it was at twenty-five. So my, my point in bringing this up is that now, instead of twenty-five through GSI, which included the economic development, we're gonna do thirty-two if we add Placer AI to the GSI membership.
So I'm not sure exactly what number, the, the Placer AI cost in twenty-six is no different than the Placer AI cost in twenty-five. And so there shouldn't be an increase in that total the, the, the net of those two costs unless the GSI membership cost went up.
No.
Okay.
So, so I think, so Mayor Protem Cargo is speaking to the, so we took away the that portion of GSI that was equal to, I believe it's thirteen or fourteen thousand, and we reduced that.
Correct.
And now our increase for Placer AI is seventeen, so it's a net increase, but just between those two, is that, is that what you're getting at?
But it's not increasing over twenty-five. I think, I think the question, in my mind, somebody needs to speak to Placer AI and what we're doing with it and how, how we're using it over and above what we were getting possibly from GSI or differently. Does, will that help? Thank you.
Sure, so the strategy for using Placer AI is, if you recall back to the presentation when we discussed that, it wasn't to replace the services that we were not contracting with GSI for. It was to take a different strategical tack. And that was to, in effect, to become a service center for local businesses, to hopefully promote economic development activity through the use of that data in a variety of ways. Some of those, we've started using, others, we are still in the process of working through some details and some ideas to put some things in motion, other things are yet to come.
An example of how we used it last year, this year?
Well, one brief example is on Thursday, I think it is, the thirteenth, we're meeting with some local businesses to talk with them about some of the foot traffic data that we can, that we can access through Placer AI to determine whether or not we can come up with some cross branding, cross marketing strategies, excuse me, for each of them to work in better partnership with one another and us. And so these are just, these are just conceptual ideas at this point. It's gonna take some time to build momentum.
We had, we had a bunch of data from, from the symphony, correct? Or am I imagining that?
We have, so it, it's not going to be possible to say the symphony explicitly, we will be able to say on the day that the symphony, symphony occurred, this was the foot traffic and compare it with every other day, yeah.
Does that help at all?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not really getting to my point, and I guess my point is simply this, we in twenty twenty-four, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on GSI, which included the economic development piece. We decided to take the economic development piece out and do twelve thousand dollars through GSI. We are supplementing the economic development piece with now additional dollars on top of what we would have been doing through GSI is what I'm trying to say. Is that?
Correct, yeah, I mean.
So instead of spending twenty-five thousand on GSI, GSI and having the whole ball be with GSI, we're spending thirty-two thousand separately with GSI and Placer AI.
I, I don't know what else is in that line item, but the two of those together aren't thirty-two thousand dollars, that's what I'm, that's what I'm answering.
So it would be, so when I programmed this in, I programmed what I thought an increase would be, that increase is not going to be realized. And so it's seventeen thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six, and I put twenty thousand dollars in there contemplating an increase in Placer AI for twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so the line on page fifty, where it says Placer AI annual subscription, twenty thousand dollars, that is a projection.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about here. So the twenty thousand dollars there, and then the twelve for GSI, which together is thirty-two.
Right.
Linda, sorry, Councilmember Vol, you had a question?
Okay, so where is thirty-two on here though? It says, you know, the notes have, what council broke, Councilmember Carl is saying, but where, where is thirty-two thousand? I don't see that number.
Twenty thousand dollars in that line item, five thirteen, ten, forty-one, zero, zero, and then Greater Spokane Inc. is at the top of the next page.
So.
Where it says twelve thousand.
Side of the accounts that are shown here.
On the next page.
Top of the page where it says Greater Spokane Inc., twelve thousand in the comment next to twenty-six thousand.
Oh. For clarity, when everybody's talking, can they like say which account? Oh, can they, can they like say account blah, 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 so we know where they are?
Yeah, try to track. Councilmember Kurtz.
Just wanted to like make sure we're on the same page with, we moved away from the contract that we had with GSI because there was some dissatisfaction amongst the council about the level of service and whatnot. We tried to do something different, and so we've invested in something different at twenty thousand dollars to see where it gets us and if it does anything different than what we were getting before. Is that a fair assessment?
I would, I would say from an administrative perspective, yes, we, we haven't had nearly enough time to test that theory yet, but as, as we get results from that, we will be sharing them with the council so that you can assess whether or not you believe that we are getting that return going forward.
So by the next budget season, we'll probably have some evidence, some data from Pacer AI to see, to make a decision next year for a budget.
And, and I would say if you don't, that would be an easy chop.
Okay.
All right, any other further questions on legislative before we move on? Okay. Starting with my page turning, all right, finance and administrative services. Jumping into the line items, this is a little bit bigger, so we'll take it page by page, page fifty-three. Are any questions or files, or anything you want to specifically note on page fifty-three?
Yeah, so as, as we attempt to tie things back to the priority-based budgeting platform, you, you'll see further on in, in the budget binder kind of that, that summary of requests. There's twenty-nine total requests, and that's on page one seventy-five, we don't need to travel there right now. But part of that contemplates bringing the IT function in-house. And so what you see is a sizable investment in full-time equivalents equal to two, so an IT manager and an IT technician equal to what I'm projecting it at about two hundred and forty thousand. And then a corresponding reduction in third-party IT service of that exact two hundred and forty thousand amount. And so what you see here on, on the first page of our line item for, for admin services is, is a substantial increase in one line item, we're taking away from others. But what's reflected in that, and, and you'll see it in the notes there, is that we're bringing on an IT manager, an IT tech. And then once we, when, when we travel down further on the, onto the next page, we'll see a, a reduction, and, and we'll call that out once we get to it. But obviously, that's, that is your, that's your rationale for going from three hundred and thirty-one thousand in twenty twenty-five to seven hundred and eighty-one thousand in twenty twenty-six.
And no, we're not getting rid of the treasurer. It looks like it.
So, so admin services was operated differently, and, and it was fine because we were able to track individual employees. It's, it's become, I, I think from my perspective, unnecessary because we don't do it with any other departments. And so essentially what we're doing is we're just condensing those line items, so you're not seeing treasurer, you're not seeing IT tech, you're not seeing human resources individually itemized because obviously if we did that with, you know, twenty-seven different officers, this, this thing would be just overwhelming. And so, so in an effort to condense those, it, it accomplishes the same thing, it's, it's, you're, you're, you're focused on less line items, and I think that's generally a better thing.
Thanks. Any, so any questions on page fifty-three? Salaries and benefits for the most.
And then benefits in general, you will see some maybe outsized adjustments or reductions purely based on what I would call qualifying events that happened during the prior year that have the potential to really increase those benefit costs. And so if you have a qualifying kid, a qualifying event, like you have a child or there's a change in the family, you can add or subtract healthcare services, and that has an impact mid-year on those line items. So we, we attempt to account for that as best we can, obviously not being able to forecast family events that, that are qualifying events.
Mayor Protem.
Give me one second to get back to it here. So on page fifty-four, which is account number five fourteen, twenty-three, forty-one, zero, zero, it says that we're gonna be transitioning to new improved accounting and timekeeping software for fifty thousand dollars more. What is that new software?
So right now our accounting software is Springbrook. Springbrook acquired Bias. Bias was our previous software, and so that, that software that we currently have has been in its current format since about two thousand and eight, and they have not, they have not increased kind of their offering of services. It's a very binary accounting system, which I love, but its reporting capabilities are zero. And so what you see when I push out reports to you is Excel-generated reports. And so what has become commonplace in the industry now is that you have accounting software that can give you twenty different reports on, just within the software that better tell the finance story. And, and I would be able to communicate that better to you. And so, so that, that is the request. It also interacts with our priority-based budgeting software as well. And so we can integrate those things and have all of these software pieces talking to each other and then to be able to deliver much more efficient messaging on, on finance and then, and obviously any, any number of other program-related pieces.
Can you also talk about the benefits on this, on the timekeeping piece of it?
So on the timekeeping, so we, so our current vendor, we pay about five hundred dollars a month, and we, we get what we pay for. And so it is a, so we've, we've pulled department director staff. It is a very clunky system, and it does not interact with our current accounting software at all. Most other ones that we've looked at do. And so that's a very big time saver on the personnel side, and that's, that's not, it's really hard to quantify, especially on a, on a month-to-month basis. If, if you have a department director struggling to approve time off or or make a, make a, kind of make a edit to an existing time card. Sometimes that takes ten or fifteen minutes and then it'll timeout and boot ya, and so there's, it's really hard to quantify that saving, but it, it saves, it saves frustration, it saves brain cells, it saves all sorts of different, just kind of unquantifiable effects. And so having a timekeeping software that is already a part of your accounting software would be a huge advantage as well.
Any further questions on that particular item or anything else on page fifty-four? Councilmember Spencer.
Follow up on that, Kyle, is that, is that a quality of life savings as well for the subordinates or, or just the management?
Very much, and so we had, so we have an app with our current vendor that works half the time. And so it's really, and, and when you're out in the street, you're out in a park and you're trying to, especially if you're on your way to work and it's four in the morning, you don't have any way to punch in when that thing's not working, and then you have to go back after the fact, you have to remember at the end of the day, oh, yes, I, I got here at four fifteen, but I wasn't able to punch in, and so I have to submit a missed punch form, and there's all of these different, there's all these different verifications that we have to do on the finance side to make sure that the employee and the director are on the same page with when they actually started. And so there's, there's really, there's, there's really, there's severe limitations on what we currently have. It is a bonus, absolutely, because we pay five hundred dollars a month for it. I mean, that is, you're not gonna find a less cost alternative. And I think that was, obviously that was the, that was kind of the driving factor, I think, that behind why we kind of stuck with them for so long as well.
Well, it goes back to, you, you said lowest costs, it was the lowest price, it was the lowest cost.
You get what you pay for, so, yeah.
Any further questions on fifty-four? Not hearing any, fifty-five? Council, Mayor Protem?
One quick question on the top one, five fourteen, twenty-three, forty-three, zero, zero. We've been pretty consistent of having somewhere between twenty-five hundred and, and at the most forty-one hundred, then back down to thirty-seven hundred. Do we really need to go to ten?
So I, I am speculating on what I think IT might need next year. And so I think we will not, we, we're not gonna come, we're not gonna come in twenty twenty-seven with, hey, we, we need this, or we're adding additional staff. We're pretty well-rounded out once we complete this change. And so when, when we were contemplating this increase, it was purely within the scope of adding those two full-time. If we know that they're not going to need that, I, I would have no issue with with reducing that going forward. Up to and including, you know, I mean, to your point, if, if we only are contemplating about five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five, I mean, I I would be okay with reducing that, but I, I don't want to speak for the employees that are not here.
Thank you, it was just, just a question about whether we were seeing new conferences that we were gonna be sending people to or what that was for, so. Anybody else?
I appreciate the recognition of the addition, the additional IT operation and recognizing what may be development or other professional conference-related support for that.
Fifty-five, yeah.
So going to five eighteen, eighty, forty-one, zero, zero, about halfway down there. So is this gonna be one employee, the IT? Are we adding one employee?
So we are adding two in-house, we don't have any in-house right now.
Right.
And so we will be adding two, we'll be, so IT manager and then an IT tech
Okay.
at some point in twenty twenty-six. And obviously with the reduction you see there.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vol?
I'm curious. Item five eighteen, ten, forty, zero, zero, human resources services? What exactly is that? Because it's not, it's not Heidi, obviously.
Right, so there are, there are third-party services that we take advantage of for cha, the changing like legal landscape of HR, and so we'll get those updates. We have ongoing background monitoring for some of our CDL drivers and, and so various other HR professional services that Heidi interacts with on a, I would say, a weekly basis.
Okay.
If you can just continue personally.
Anyone else?
So there is a, there is something I do want to call out on here, and it's five nine seven seven six zero three three eight. That's the transfer out for Trailhead Improvements Projects Fund. So in twenty-twenty-five, we budgeted uh, to contemplate a prepayment to Trailhead on December first of this year, five hundred thousand coming from uh, the general fund and five hundred thousand coming from REIT. And so as we, as we travel through this budget, you will see I, what I would call an outsized impact of cash funding the capital improvements in twenty-twenty-six. And what that does is obviously that provides potential strain on ending fund balances. And consequently, uh, once we review Fund Four Twenty Golf Operations, you will see um, the um, I get the, it's a substantial increase in revenue to the point that we do not have to rely on any other funds for the repayment of that bond going forward other than golf operations. And so that's an annual payment of four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to the bond that golf operations in twenty-twenty-six and going forward can make themselves additionally. Towards the latter part of our budget review uh, in twenty-twenty-five quarter, uh, in twenty-twenty-four, Four Twenty Twenty-five, Councilmember Kennedy made the comment of, hey, let's investigate uh, what are the allowable uses for tourism capital? And so we reviewed that, I reviewed that, and I am recommending uh, that council consider using those funds as a potential alternate source for prepayment to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we'll have, I think we'll end twenty-twenty-six with roughly six hundred thousand dollars in that fund. We do not have any other potential capital projects that would be eligible for that outside of uh, those trailhead improvements. And so it would be my recommendation that we do not prepay with general fund and real estate excise tax to the bond and instead contemplate a potential five hundred thousand dollar prepayment to the bond from tourism capital and then rely solely on golf operations going forward to, to make those payments so that we're not attributing any additional resources from any other fund going forward. And so what I'm saying is these are contemplations. I, I don't, we don't need a answer uh, right now. I have already signaled uh, to Webster um, that we have this provided for in the twenty-two, twenty-five budget to prepay a million dollars. They have um, receded our, our intent. But I guess my recommendation um, to council, because of all of the other capital um, projects that we have in twenty-twenty-six is that we do not execute the payment as it's currently constructed in the budget.
My apologies for being distracted. I'll, I've got something to fill you in, all in on after the meeting. All right. So where did we leave off? Who we?
So we're still on fifty-five.
Thank you.
Um, so Kyle, walk me through this one more time. We typically pay about a little less than half million for the bond.
Correct.
Last year, the council approved that half million plus another half million for a total of a million.
Yep.
What you're saying is because of all the other priorities now that we have, that we shouldn't pay that, that half million, that we should essentially pull it out and let a different fund pay for it via the fund that you're speaking of as the tourism fund?
Correct.
So just a different source?
Yeah. So to clarify, uh, it, it was a million on top of the regular bond payment, wasn't it?
So yeah, four hundred and forty-three thousand coming from a mix of golf operations and REIT. An additional five hundred thousand coming from REIT, an additional five hundred thousand coming from general fund.
Right. So we were going to cover the payment, but then we were going to put a, a million dollars toward the, the principal.
Correct. Yes. Yep.
So, so uh, and I guess uh, to clarify, did, were we required to wait till December? Was that the earliest?
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
Um, I, I'm glad to see that golf operations is going to pay for the, for the payment. Um, but we still don't have a plan to pay that at an accelerated rate. Is that correct?
Not outside of what was just um, proposed.
Though, all along we've been talking about, when we were, we were talking about getting this bond, it was, hey, you know, REIT will cover whatever golf operations can't cover. Thank goodness they're, you know, going to uh, produce enough profit to pay for that payment themselves. That's great, but we still don't have a plan in place to uh, pay that down at an accelerated rate, which is what we told the citizens we were going to do. So just want to throw that out there that we told the citizens we were going to attempt to do that at an accelerated rate, and we have no plan.
And I think there's a, there's a very important distinction there that um, we will going forward not use any other funds besides golf operations to pay this. And so I think that is a very important distinction, that we're not grabbing from general fund when those could be used for additional capital projects, or grabbing from REIT when those could be uh, used for additional horizontal capital construction as well. And so I think that is a very important piece of that.
But, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, Kyle, and yes, it's ideal if golf operations covers it. However, that's what we hope will happen.
Right.
It's not guaranteed. I mean, we could, we could have a downturn and the general fund's going to back it up.
Uh, potentially, absolutely. Yeah. Yep. Or REIT or any of the other ones that we talked about, so.
Right. Anybody else? Page fifty-five or fifty-six? Mayor Pro Tim?
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Councilmember Ball, go ahead.
No, no, no. I said, I said, don't, don't flip pages yet.
Go ahead.
Okay, nevermind.
So um, the, the two point five that is under five nine four eighteen sixty-two oh four for the new city hall design and construction um, is, uh, I'm trying to um, square this with last year's budget and how we could have that in there and not be any more than we were last year. I suppose part of the reason for that is because we transferred out last year two point four to the library capital fund. And so this is just spending essentially the same exact amount.
Exactly. Yeah. So obviously we did not, we did not execute the library project as contemplated in the twenty-twenty-five budget. So those resources are reallocated to the city hall.
Okay. So that, I guess that was my question. So then we're backing that out of the library fund and putting it towards city hall?
Yes. And so what we're doing is we're doing nothing. We're not executing that transfer as it was contemplated in the twenty-twenty-five budget. So we're, to your point, I'm, I guess I'm just phrasing it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
That, yeah, we're, we are repurposing those funds towards the city hall construction.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, Kyle, that's a hundred percent of those funds, correct?
Uh, yeah, that would be probably a hundred and two percent, because we're, we are contributing more to the city hall design in twenty-twenty-six than we would have uh, to the library in twenty-twenty-five.
Any, anything else for finance? Nope. Next, legal services?
Can you leave the room, Sean? So we can talk about it.
All right. Any, any uh, questions about that? Obviously there's not a detail page. Going once, going twice?
I, I tend to want to have a huge problem with nubs.
Okay. Public safety, the one of our biggest ones. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I find it. Just to get on our turn to the fifth side, I think we should at least make these deliberations.
We have not received anything.
I'll wait until middle of next year.
It'll be a one-year membership in the Jelly of the Month Club.
All right. Public safety. Um, obviously a lot of this is covered by the collective bargaining agreement. You'll see the uh, um, the addition of the one, there we go, and one commissioned police officer halfway down the position summary, we're going from sixteen to seventeen, everything else remains the same. And the part-time addition of civil service secretary chief examiner, um, chief, I don't know if you want, I see you're on and you're unmuted. Do you want to say anything about that? We had it scheduled for twenty-twenty, oh, sorry. Sorry, I forgot. I thought that was zero for twenty-twenty-five. Never mind. Is there anything you want to address before we get into the details on your section?
Thank you, mayor. Um, good evening, members of the council, citizens of Liberty Lake. No, I, I don't have much on this page um, from a priority-based budgeting standpoint. However, I just wanted to point out that um, the changes to the budget this year were based primarily on the fact that we want to produce better program results, especially in programs, or our programs such as call service response, crime prevention, criminal investigation, and traffic uh, safety and enforcement, and also our WASPAC accreditation program, which is kind of our primary focus this year, getting uh, getting accredited and becoming a uh, an accredited agency. And I'm sorry, I did a lot of talking today um, at the WASPAC conference, so I'm losing my voice.
Right. Okay. So let's get into it. Um, anything on page one, salaries, overtime, benefits? I think that was pretty much all covered in the collective bargain agreement, plus the contracts that are coming up.
Yeah, just one question. I know last year, part of the discussion, because we added a, a bit to their budget, and um, part of the conversation was around, I believe it was the analyst, the, the uh, hiring of an analyst. And so I'm assuming what we have here is based on recommendations coming also from that analyst? Or no?
Yes. Our, our crime analyst has provided um, uh, quite a bit of useful data this year that has led us uh, completely in the direction of evidence-based policing. City administrator Mark McAvoy uh, comes over uh, I, I believe it's once a month for a one-on-one, and our one-on-one includes a one-on-one with the crime analyst. Uh, during that one-on-one, she prevents, or she presents, excuse me, um, data for uh, the previous month or months, plural, uh, depending on what uh, city administrator Mark uh, wants to see. Um, and uh, so a lot of, a lot of attention uh, has been paid towards data and how that data can lead us in the direction that uh, we need to go as far as uh, public safety.
Councilmember, if, if I can add some context to that, uh, Nichelle Sauls, who's the crime analyst, is, is primarily focused on uh, criminal data analysis. She's not doing much to um, tailor budget requests, but.
Got it.
Anybody else? Okay. Oh, yes, go ahead.
One question, under leases, on a, what, uh, like, two thousand twenty-five, ninety-five thousand five hundred, what do we pay in leases?
What, what page are you on? Sorry.
I'm sorry, we're on fifty-eight.
Yeah, we'll have to get to that page. Well, the details will be when we get to that page here.
Yeah. So that's primarily going to be Axon, um, so Body Cam and Tasers.
Yeah, the, the line item for that is on sixty-four.
Oh, okay. I, I was a couple of pages behind. And uh, uh, Madam Mayor, I could, I could barely hear Councilman Kennedy.
Everybody, remember to use your, get closer to your mics. Thank you. All right. Um, got a question from Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, chief, the, one of the biggest increases is on page sixty-one, uh, five two one ten forty, the EMS agreement with the sheriff um, going from two sixty to three forty. Can you talk a little bit about that and why that is?
Of course. Um, so in two thousand.
We're going to put a time limit on this one.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I'll try to make it quick. Um, it's a long story, but I'll try to make it quick. In two thousand and fourteen, um, we started a new project to look for um, a new uh, CAD system and dispatch system for our officers throughout the county, not just our agency, but countywide. Um, and so through a lot of research, um, a lot of testing, um, all of the agencies in two thousand and sixteen, I believe, in fall of two thousand and sixteen, uh, decided they wanted to go with uh, Tyler New World for that system. A lot of problems with that system, um, Mayor Pro Tim, a lot of problems, and I'm not going to get into that. Um, but um, again, in twenty-twenty-one, we started talking about replacing New World, uh, their system because of all of those issues. Again, a lot of testing, a lot of travel, a lot of discussion, committee meetings, meetings between leadership and uh, not only leadership, but uh, line personnel who are responsible for um, instituting that, you know, these systems as well. So a lot of discussion, uh, decided that Hexagon would work out best with us, and that was in twenty-twenty-four to replace New World. Um, and the Spokane Regional Emergency Communications Center did a fantastic job, uh, kind of leading uh, and taking lead on this, this research and, and this, this quest to figure out what, what's going to work best for us. Again, Hexagon came in number one as far as the system that um, everyone agreed upon uh, would work best for us. And every agency in the county, with the exception of Spokane PD and Spokane Airport, decided to take play, or take part in, in this replacement. Now, that, with that said, Spokane Airport and Spokane Police initially were in um, on the change. And so there was an initial cost um, that was associated with this, that it, it seemed like everything was going to stay consistent as far as the cost. But when Spokane PD and Spokane Airport pulled out, that increased the uh, cost, especially for the smaller agencies exponentially. And so for us, um, the yearly cost uh, for the purchase share, the purchase share total, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, for that is two point seven million dollars overall, um, with a twenty thousand dollar initial uh, infrastructure purchase cost. The yearly share maintenance cost for that is two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, uh, like, two hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred dollars or so. I mean, there's also a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar SREP yearly cost in regards to their maintenance and hardware and, and IT support, et cetera. And so when the, the, the cost for each agency is determined on uh, the number of uh, incident reports generated by each agency per year, and we pay uh, according to those costs. The Liberty Lake Police Department, we're responsible um, for two point eight five percent of those uh, incidents. Um, and uh, so that total for us came out to be, for the purchase, the initial purchase cost was seventy-nine thousand sixty-six dollars. And that's where that eighty thousand dollar ask was uh, initially in that, in the budget for that, with a, a five hundred and um, seven dollar uh, infrastructure purchase share for that. And then our yearly cost moving forward after uh, the implementation, which this is supposed to be implemented in the first or second quarter of twenty-twenty-six, is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and six dollars moving forward after this year.
Okay, thank you.
That's a lot. Thank you. Hey, um, any other questions on your own?
I'm there.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, just, just to piggyback on that, on that particular one, if, if Spokane Airport and Spokane eventually decide they do want to, to join in, was, was the, the overall setup cost reduced by what, what they would have had to pay in? Or, or was there some sort of package based on everybody who did jump in? And if they wanted to come in later, they wouldn't incur those setup costs?
Yeah. So, so originally, if, if Spokane PD and Spokane Airport were to participate, um, the initial plan was to keep the formula for the cost uh, the same as with New World. So there wouldn't have been, I mean, there may have been a slight uh, increase or decrease per agency depending on uh, calls for service or incidents, but it wasn't going to change much at all. Again, when uh, Spokane PD and Spokane Airport uh, decided to pull out, that, that changed everything. And so if they decide to come back, there should be a decrease in cost. If um, the, the original plan, as the same plan that we used with New World was instituted, however, that would have to be uh, determined through discussion.
All right. Hey, you have nothing else on the sixty-one? Anything on sixty-two? Not hearing any? Oh, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Kurtz?
Uh, chief, on the first line item on that page, five two one ten forty-eight zero zero, um, it talks about proposed purchase of three new special purpose vehicles. Can you talk about what those special purpose vehicles are for?
No, special purpose, uh, purpose vehicles are just patrol vehicles. They call them special purpose vehicles. When you, when you go to purchase those, they're not normal civilian vehicles. They're called special purchase vehicles, SPVs, when you look at the state website. So uh, that just lets you know that those are um, police packaged vehicles. Um, and they do come with equipment and um, changes in um, um, with their uh, you know, the engineering that, that you can't purchase in a normal vehicle.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Page sixty-three, there's one line item. Furniture computers, equipment. Furniture computers, equipment, there's pretty good explanation. There's any particular questions, Councilmember Kurtz?
This message, this question is for the chief too, regarding the flock cameras. There's been a couple of different news reports regarding flock cameras and access to the images on those. And I think there was recently some public records requests somewhere, I think in the state, and some concern about flock cameras and who can access those from other cities in the state. And I wondered if you could talk about that a little bit, if you are able to.
Okay, yeah, the main concern was around federal agencies accessing the flock camera system and using those for immigration purposes. And so we've addressed that. We do not have any federal agencies who have access to our cameras now. I think we had one previously, which was the United States Postal Inspectors. We've since remedied that. And all agencies who have access to our cameras are state or local agencies. And so again, that main concern was around entities accessing those, and not only federal agencies, but also state and local agencies using that, or the images or the data that's gleaned from those for immigration purposes. And so, of course, we have a state law in Washington that, you know, prohibits us from, as local law enforcement, taking part in immigration issues, except under specific circumstances that have to do with criminal investigations. And so, yeah, we address that, and there's no issues on our, with our flock cameras regarding those other issues that some of the other agencies were having.
Thank you.
All right, going on to the last, oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, on page 63, Chief, this needs to argue yourself. I read on the comments inside there of the 380,000 is all broken down. About three quarters of the way down, it starts a sentence, improved funding for the services marijuana tax revenue. Is all that dollar amount paid by marijuana tax revenue?
I believe, and I'll leave that to Kyle, but I do believe our entire flock camera bill is paid through or with marijuana tax revenue.
It's, so it's very close. We've added some additional cameras. And so I would say it's probably 90% funded by the marijuana excise tax. In between 55 and 60,000 a year.
Anything else on this page?
You have to say, if you ever go by marijuana store out there, look at the license plate you're leaving. I want to thank Idaho.
Excellent observation, sir.
It's legal, Mike, it's okay.
64, page 64.
So I'm just going to provide some anecdotal just context here. Obviously, we see 2025 appropriated, we see 2026 proposed. I think this, I think the ongoing discussion is important as we see the rising costs of what it takes to deliver PD services and keep in the back of our mind the opportunity that we have with some of the discussions we had at the last council meeting regarding public safety sales tax.
And Kyle, the reason for this increase obviously is the new bargaining agreement, right?
So in, so if you go back to the, to that salary line item, about a third of that is, is the bargain.
Collective.
Yeah.
Okay, community development, page 65.
So Lisa's actually out. And so if it's okay with the council, I'd like to continue to library. And then we can circle back with Lisa when she's back, probably on our meeting on the 24th, I want to say.
Page 69.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey. Welcome. Do you have anything in particular, Janie, you want to point out before we get started?
I had a first thing on this first page with the position summary. So something I wanted to point out that was a fault of mine, not Kyle's. In 2025, it has us listed as one librarian, and we are actually two librarians. So our new children's librarian starts on Wednesday, and so she will be joining us. In 2025, we had it budgeted as a part-time librarian, and we ended up swapping one of our associate staff to be part-time. So it was a net zero change. But we will have a new librarian onboard as of Wednesday.
It was quite a process, but the candidate you hired was the best of all of them.
Yes, yes, we've been trying to hire since May. So it was a very, very long process.
Offers made and not true.
Yes.
Yeah, so you confused me. So we've got two librarians now, right? And no part-time librarian?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right, so.
And then I have a couple of things to add on the next page, but I didn't want to jump ahead.
No, absolutely, go ahead, Janie.
Okay, so I wanted to tell you about our two line items that we have for the PBB budgeting. So the first is the request for laptop computers. That's going to be coming out of our capital budget. So as you know, one of the challenges that we've been seeing at the library is a really high demand for people to use our public computers. However, we don't have any more space to add additional desktop computers. So the way that we are proposing to supplement this in 2026 is by purchasing some Chromebooks and then a laptop charging station. So basically, these Chromebooks would live in this little box that charges them. And then when we have patron, when we are out of desktop computers, we can hand these out to patrons at the front desk, and they can go find a quiet corner and still be able to use our computers and our internet. The second thing I had is in addition to our programming budget. So one of the things that we've been hearing from the public for the last couple of years is that they want to see more speakers at the library. One of our challenges with this is just, we don't really have a large enough room to host these speakers. And, you know, a lot of these great speakers are expensive, and so obviously, travel here to Washington is expensive. You know, paying for their travel, their lodging, all of those things. So we have partnered with the, it's a national group called the Library Speakers Consortium. And so we'll be paying $20,500 in 2026, and we will have basically an on-demand service. So you can, as patrons, tune in live and listen to Kristin Hannah or whomever is the speaker for that month. You can tune in live, ask questions, that sort of thing, listen to her author talk. But if you are at work or you have some, you know, something come up that evening, it's on demand. So our patrons are able to go back and watch that author talk. So we felt like that was kind of the best of both worlds and is a pretty affordable cost. Yes.
And you do this on your own computer, or do you have to check one of yours?
So basically, we would have a website that's hosted, that's, you know, Library Speakers Consortium, but it's Liberty Lake. We'll have a Liberty Lake-specific page that they'll be able to log on and use at home. Or if they wanted to come to the library, obviously, they could watch it on our computers. But we'll be contracting for two author talks a month, and so there will be a fiction talk, author talk, and then a nonfiction author talk throughout that month.
Great, yes, love it, thank you. All right, so the library's budget is not that big, so we have any questions on 70 or 71? We're getting risky here with two pages at a time. No questions? All right, thanks, Janie.
Great, easy.
Hey, next up, Parks Maintenance and Operations. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you. All right, well, I guess I'll start off with the summary page. We don't have any staffing changes for next year. That's amazing. In a very long time. Yeah, so there are no changes in that realm. I think what I noticed overall in the budgets this year for parks, maintenance-wise, not public art, but for parks, the biggest increase that we're seeing, or the most increases or changes are in the recreation world and also in our special events world. We're looking at the city birthday event, which is, we're trying right now to plan for a large-scale, big deal. It's the city's 25th birthday, the United States 250th birthday. So we're proposing, and we have a coordinating committee right now, trying to work together to put some things together. Something really special on the Fourth of July, so there's definitely an increased budget line for that. Also, the addition of the winter event has changed some things. So that is probably the line item that I would say is the one that you'll see the largest increase in. And then your typical capital facilities changes, those change every year. But I don't know, we could go ahead and kick off the next page unless there are questions on the summary.
Keep on going.
All right. So we didn't have too much on that first page. There is a janitorial line that's, if you have any questions, that's going to be prepared. But otherwise, I didn't have too many changes on that first page. If there are no questions, I can go on. My page line numbers, I think, are different than yours. So the second page for me is 75. We get into that line, those line items, and so you'll see 571003104 is the one that is increasing substantially for consideration of the city birthday event and then continued growth in the winter programming event.
I've got a quick, two questions, Mayor Protim and then Councilmember Noel.
Quick question on the city birthday and 250 as well. Is that also going to include a larger fireworks display?
Yes, we're anticipating a larger fireworks, a large increase, potentially, possibly, and I haven't revealed this yet, but potentially, possibly even drones. So it is not cheap. So this, this will, this budget will allow us to either just have a fireworks show or a fireworks and drone combination display. Councilmember Ball?
Central supplies up here, boy, it sure dropped. What's happened here?
What's the line item on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, 51830.
So this was an effort of what our new, obviously, Ben taking over Public Works. He's got, he is responsible for those, those utility and facility line items. And so you'll see those dispersed evenly amongst all of the different facilities to which they're actually being used. And so it's specific to the Public Works building, it's specific to Parks, it's specific to the new building. And so Ben can certainly explain it a lot better than I can, but he has done a lot of work within these line items to piece those out to where they're actually going.
Okay, so I'm on page 75. It starts with 576802806. That's where I was discussing the special event supplies line item. We have a couple of changes further down. Nothing too terribly different. I'd say the largest change is on the ball field supplies, 576803115. We're looking to actually replace the benches and bleachers at Rookie Field in Pavilion Park next year. They are, they've been wood for all the years I've been here, and they're dilapidated, and we need to switch out to aluminum. We have seen an increase in broken playground equipment, particularly at Rocky Hill. So we did increase that a little bit more than normal. You can see that line item, it's 576803155. It varies, and we see that in all the park supplies line items. They do vary from year to year to some degree between 2,000 or 3,000. And a lot of that is just repairs. Some years, we don't have any repairs, and some years, like this year, Orchard Park saw a lot of irrigation maintenance, a lot of breaks. So our utilities bill increased in that line item, and then playground vandalism and disrepair, so. And playground parts are not inexpensive.
Councilmember Dunn?
Question, Jen, remind me, when was Pavilion Park's playground equipment going to be turned over?
Well, that is a great question, and the hope was for next year. After a discussion with Parks and Arts Commission, we are proposing that, we put that off. And I think in the capital facilities plan, it also shows scheduled for next year, 2026. But we really want to get through this parks plan to, we're doing a lot of engagement of what the community wants to see put back. How big do you want us to do this renovation? Are we just replacing like and kind, which is one very particular dollar figure? Or while we're in there, do we replace the splash pad and do we expand the playground? It's not large enough to accommodate multiple pieces of equipment that the community has stated that they would like. I don't know that it's realistic. We can gather all that info and implement next year. We'd like to get through the Parks Plan Phase Two in 2026 and then make a proposal in 2027 or end of '26, this time next year of a budget and a plan to move forward of which way we need to be funded and which direction that we should go. So, because we start, we start looking at the overall, that people want swings, should we update the splash pad? It's 30 years old, it's past due. It's not broken, but do we wait till it's broken? And the dollar signs, as I've done the digging on this, I mean, we're starting to talk about a million dollars, and it's unbelievable.
For just the splash?
No, no, for the whole thing, the whole thing. If we were to do an entire playground setup.
And I'm sure we're also looking at accessible.
Yes, it's outdated, it's accessible, it is not an inclusive playground. There is a huge difference. And in today's day and age, it would be staff's recommendation to do something with an inclusive playground, much more like Orchard Park. I mean, even Rocky is falling behind in that place, and we're going to have to think about Rocky in probably 10 to 20 years, because it's pushing 20 years old, so.
The playground?
Mm-hmm, 2010.
Those, you know, the B and whatnot.
Yes, we got it fixed.
Yeah, because they break a lot.
Yeah, so, so we're thinking some things as we rebuild, but it is, it is no small task. And in the meantime, crews keep repairing and why not, so.
I support the want to continue engagement and do some more planning.
Thank you. So that will change the discussion with that number on the capital facilities plan. Let's see, we have a little bit of an increase, like I said, in the recreation world, just growing with the changes with the new recreation coordinator, adding some programming, adding some trainings, adding some memberships. So those are the line items that we've seen increase. Nothing huge, but line items that haven't changed in a very long time, until really this year, where he's been in the door two years now, and we're getting a feel for the items and the things that he needs to support him.
And we're also increasing our revenues along with that.
Yes, yes, that is the goal.
But which, what's the item number?
Well, there are several. One is 571, it's any of the 571 lines, those are the recreation world.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, so you can see the histories there are starting, we're starting to build a new history. So those have some different, different changes in them. And then the next, on the next page, if there are no further questions, the 571004105 special events, that is also in tandem with the one I was just referring to. This is the one where you see the large increase for the drones. The previous one I was discussing is the supplies. So it's the supplies that staff buys for the day of the event. This is where we bring in the professionals for the entertainment and pay the professionals. So whether it's the pyrotechnician, or the band, or the beer garden, or whatever, that's, that's what that money goes to.
Go ahead, Linda.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I just was, I've been thinking about this, and this is one of the things I wanted to ask you. You're answering my question so far. Would it be, I mean, pyrotechnics are expensive, would it be less expensive? Because, I mean, this is a lot of money for this big shaboom, just to do a really awesome drone show, or is that more?
The drone show is the one that is the expense.
The labor.
Yeah, so if we did not, I will, I will say, if we did not do the drone show, and I should have brought the number, I don't have it. It, I want to, it was up in the wheelhouse of $160,000. So it's expensive. If we don't do the drone show, we can do one heck of a fireworks display. So last year, who else saw the fireworks display last year? It was substantially larger than any other year we've had, because the budget was increased by two. So if we were to just do the fireworks and not the drones, that is an option. We could still have, I mean, that was $26,000 last year for the fireworks show. There will be an increase of some sort this year, some 10% increase probably. You know, that was a 13-minute show. It was fairly impressive. You know, that was a thirteen minute show. It was fairly impressive. You don't, in in the world of pyrotechnics, you don't really want to go much longer than fifteen to seventeen minutes. Some places go twenty or longer. You start losing people. So that thirteen to fifteen minute range is something. They can always compress the show, that same show for more money, tighten it up, make it more wow. So if you did thirty, thirty-five thousand, even forty thousand instead of the drones, you could do that. We just thought that, you know, you always see a lot of feedback for people who don't necessarily care for the fireworks. Why can't we do drones? Drones is new and different. It's new in the region. It's very popular. It's it's very well done and professionally done. The nice thing about drones, too, is they can customize it. So they could, since it's such a special day, we thought what a great way to customize with some of the designs that, you know, they could really do something nice, so.
Answered that question.
So Jen, was the idea that if we do bring drones in, for instance, it would just be a one-time thing? I guess the concern is, once you, you know, bring it, are you going to be able to take it away, so?
That is a very good point.
Very, very special appearance for at the birthday. Councilmember Curtis, do you have your hand up? Anybody else? All right.
All right, yeah. If there are any other particular questions? So I'm on seventy-seven, not sure which.
I have one more.
Sure.
Central Services, Professional Services, five, eighteen, three, oh, four, one, zero, zero.
What's our page, Linda?
Our page is seventy-five. Transition to third-party gen- janitorial service. Increased costs offset by salary. So, so we're doing in-house janitorial?
So we, we did have a janitor on staff. We no longer have a janitor on staff, and now we, we hire those services out.
So the, for all, all of our facilities, including like the park bathrooms or?
No.
No, okay.
Buildings.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else on Parks was kind of too much. Jen, you have anything else in particular you want to hit?
No, those were the highlights. Those were the big ones for us. So if there are any other detailed questions, please feel free.
There are just, you know, anywhere between seventy-three and seventy-eight. Let's know what page you're on and what the fund number is if you have any questions.
Yeah, our, our equipment on the, you know, it varies from year to year. It's down a little bit this year. Again, that can be a CFP discussion. We've got some basic maintenance that needs to get done at our parks on the CFP side on the five. These are all the five, nine, fours. But those vary from year to year depending on what a park needs, but they're all, they're all things that we need to do to take care of our parks. They're nothing new and fancy and pretty, that they're, they're just items of of resurfacing courts and repainting things and whatnot.
Yeah, so down towards the bottom of that page seventy-seven, we're looking at the five, nine, four, seven, six, six, three, zero, one. And this is from the CFP, camera upgrades at all parks. And I guess, what, what are, what are we going to get out of that? Like, are we going to be catching kids destroying, you know, playground equipment, or what, what's the idea there?
Yeah, so I think Chief, if you're still on, contemplate kind of the the benefit of having the upgraded cameras at all the parks from a public safety perspective.
Of course. So right now our cameras that we have, none of them work, like none, zip, zero. They're extremely outdated. You know, from a public safety standpoint, whether we're talking about proactive police work or reactive police work, we need something in the parks that is useful for us if we're going to have cameras in the park. Unfortunately, from a law enforcement standpoint, we cannot, or even from a staff standpoint, period, city staff standpoint, whether we're talking about maintenance or law enforcement, we can't be in the park twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And unfortunately, we have super nice parks, and we have we have people that visit our parks periodically that don't respect our parks. We have vandalisms, we have damage. Unfortunately, every now and then we have a crime that occurs such as the gentleman who did the burnouts in the parking lot over at Pavilion. I mean, that was over ten thousand dollars worth of damage. That case was solved because someone had a cell phone. Our cameras weren't working and recorded that incident. And so we were able to use the flock cameras and that cell phone footage to identify the suspect. And so we do have incidents in our parks where surveillance video is extremely, extremely useful in identifying suspects. And ultimately, hopefully solving cases and again, in which people vandalize our, our equipment and our property, city property, and/or we have any other criminal incidents such as assaults. And I mean, there's a lot of different things that that have, we've investigated in the parks that I'm not going to get into. But some of those do include assaults and sexual assaults. And so to have the surveillance images to support our investigative needs would be extremely useful. And I, and I think the citizens deserve it, that that peace of mind that, you know, if something happens, there's especially from a technological standpoint, we're, we're up to date and we're using all the tools that are available to protect you know, them as as park users and also protect the property of the city.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just follow up that, you know, I live near Orchard Park and and there appears to be some sort of camera on the top of the bathroom concession structure, and I've seen kids up on top of the roof there running around playing hide and seek and stuff, so I'm like, that's pretty audacious if those cameras are working, but now we learned that it's no, no different than just a little cheap something you get on Amazon with a light to as a deterrent, which isn't doing anything, a modern day scarecrow.
Yes, exactly.
Cue the increased vandalism in the parks after all that hit.
And so Mayor, if I may, if there's no other questions specifically on parks and recreation. I, I, I would like, while, while Jen's up at the podium, to transition to Fund One Eleven. If it's okay with the council so that she can ta- tackle that as well, and then we'll backtrack to Streets.
In all other funds?
Eighty-six, yeah. And so I apologize to staff, something went haywire with the printing between when I printed for you guys and when I printed for staff. And we're one page off. It'd be eighty-seven for ours, Jen.
Everybody there? Eighty-five for you, I think, Jen.
And so Parks and Arts Chair Nancy Hill went through a kind of a budget rundown in October. And so if there's any questions, Jen will field those.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest thing is the change, the increase. They have a slew of projects added for next year that they haven't had before. I, I'm trying to find the number on the CFP, but five. Yeah, five, thank you. Now we're going to find the CFP.
And while, while Jen's doing that, just, and this is what I, sometimes I hate about our funds. It's not three hundred and twelve thousand in addition to the seventy-four for this year. We're rolling how much of that over, Kyle?
A hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah, so it's supposed to be on the, on CFP or on the, actually on the Parks and Art Strategic Plan is two hundred and seven thousand for next year, which is the highest that they've ever requested. The, all the projects are outlined in there. One of the new projects is a birthday art to be unveiled at the birthday celebration on the fourth of July. So there's a special piece that will happen, actually two pieces that are slated, that's to the tune of about ninety thousand of that. So had we not had that, we would have been more in the range of what our normal years have been. But all the projects, there is a Parks and Art Strategic Plan. I don't know if there's a, oh, yeah, it's, it's age. I don't know where the plan went, but the Parks and Arts Commission budget in detail is on page one, one hundred and fifty-eight for my in my book.
Fifty-nine for us.
That outlines all of the projects that they are proposing for two thousand twenty-six, including the carryover art from this year that has yet to be finalized, finished and invoiced. You can see the carryover art at the top, one, two, three, four lines. And then the lines following that are the new art for next year. So that's the detail here.
So the details, one sixty-one for us. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, yeah, I had a lot of questions on this. So the first item, Liberty Lake Together Art, Kramer Parkway, that's the mountain thing, right? With the glass in it.
Are you on two thousand twenty-six?
Well, I'm on page one sixty-one.
Yeah, but what year, what year?
Oh, oh, two thousand twenty-four.
Oh, oh.
I mean, is that, so that's still, that's still being rolled over.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so, but that's different from the Kramer Roundabout.
Correct.
What are they doing there?
Nothing, it's on pause right now.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. It, boulder art.
Boulder art, that was, that has been completed.
Okay, because last week they talked about the rock garden. Now I'm confused, rocks, boulders.
Rock garden, so the rock garden is a donated project. Yeah, and yeah, it was just on the agenda.
And then community art, forty thousand tentative location, what's that?
Goat, goat statues. That is currently currently in the works right now. The artist agreement will come forward in the next meeting or two. They have a lot of projects right now.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. And then the Pavilion mural extension, is that the bathroom, et cetera, building?
Correct, and onto the ticket booth. Yes, so they're going to finish the, the mural, the whole original goal was to carry it around the restroom and over to the ticket booth. They hope to get that done next year.
Are the get artists going to do it again?
Yes, the same order.
We have the same artist, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and then carousel, they're painting it or no, or what's the carousel?
That's, that is going to be included in the birthday art. So that's AKA birthday art.
Okay, but it's not a carousel like river.
No, 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 no. It, it's themed, the theme of the art is to coincide with the carousel mural. So it'll all tie in, that's the whole.
Okay.
In fact, the brother who is the artist for the city birthday art, his brother did the mural, their brothers.
He was my neighbor. If he's doing it.
Yeah, he is.
All right, so any questions on the strategic plan for the Parks and Arts Commission or the fund one? Whatever the fund was, I lost it. Any questions? All right. Okay, that's good. So anything else for Jen before she steps away and I sent a note to the three of you?
Thank you.
All right, so.
Excellent, so we'll backtrack to Fund One Ten.
Okay, well, hold on.
Sorry.
So we're done, so we're done with the regular funds, so I just want to make sure. So now we're on the orange tab.
Yep.
All other funds.
Mine's green.
Yours is green. Oh, sorry, I didn't know our tabs were the same colors, my bad. When it says all other funds. All right, Public Works, Street Operations, Fund One Ten.
All right, so I'll go over just real quickly some of the, some of the ads I had in the priority-based budget report, that they kind of blend in with the, the first page, which is page eighty on mine, it might be page.
It is for us.
Oh, this is weird. All right, so I, I know we talked a little bit about staffing to begin with, and while our overall attrition is fairly minimal, and within the Streets Department, it is not. So some of the things that we've worked on this year is creating ladder positions within the Streets Division as well as a couple of other things. But so two of the things that we're doing, kind of the major ones, is we're, we're creating, we're not really creating new positions, we're transitioning two of our maintenance worker positions and no maintenance worker two positions. So you'll see maintenance worker one and maintenance worker two. So the overall number doesn't change, but two of those nine positions are going to see an increase in pay as well as responsibility part of this budget request. That gives our, because the, the folks that we've lost since I've been here, we've already lost three, and we only have four. So we had to replace those. That means more training, all those things. And this is really a skilled labor position. So we're trying to get closer to some, a little closer to our peers when it comes to those particular skills. And I see us doing this a little bit more in the future and future years, but this year, we're, we're specifically looking at the Streets Division for, for this request. We're also asking for two seasonal public work staff, one to help our horticultural division that we found this year that we had quite a bit of bleeding, whether it's throughout the city on the roadways or within the parks, that we definitely need some additional help during the summer season. So that'd be one in horticulture under Dan Moss and one in roadside under Chris Carriker. So that's in the public, the priority-based budgeting request as well. So that's the kind of the staffing adjustments that you kind of see on the first page there. We also have, one of the other major changes is, when I briefed you on the pavement master plan, part of that pavement master plan came with the software. Last year, it was in the CFP, it was paid for out of the CFP. This year, it's included in there, coming out of this, it's kind of divided up between the stormwater fund, which I'm not going to talk about now, but and then part of it's out of the Streets. So you'll see a twelve thousand dollar request to pay for part of that software. So those are the major changes on public priority-based budgeting. On the first page, you'll see a big difference between supplies and professional services. We're transitioning doing less professional services, less contractors, more in-house staff as we build our apartment. So you kind of see, that's kind of a flip-flop. And then the capital outlay, that that's the big difference, that's really just the CFP line items we added for street tree replacement, roundabouts, medians, beautification, things like that, as well as the street maintenance fund that we took out last year by mistake, and we're putting it back in. So that is, for the most part, what I've got on the first page, and if anybody's worried, we've already ordered four loads of salt. So we're ready to go. It's supposed to snow in a little bit. So that, that, that is full, well ahead of that this year. For the hundred and thirty K that we had budgeted last year, I think we only used about half of it, based on what your binders have. That's gone up a little bit since we've gotten a few more words of salt. We expect a little bit bigger winter, winter this year. So we, we like to keep that the same, just to, just to cover some contingency. But those are the kind of the big things that we've got going on first pitch.
Maybe question for Kyle is the gas tax revenues, three, thirty-six, zero, zero, eighty-seven, oh. It doesn't seem to have a pattern in any particular direction, gas tax.
Dan, can you get closer to your mic, please?
Sure, I'm asking regarding the gas tax revenues, and I'm looking for any patterning. It doesn't seem to have a, a particular direction.
No, and so these are passed on directly from the state, and it's, it is per capita. But the contributions are fluctuating every year, based on the capital budget in, in Washington. And so we usually get these. I would say in September, every year, they usually have the following years per capita contribution pretty well solidified.
So we would expect to see the twenty twenty-five actual be supplemented by future months.
Correct, yep, yes.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I have a question on taxes, essentially the transportation benefit district. And then the difference between what was probably the utility tax, are those, can I assume that those are all sort of the utility tax in the column for twenty twenty-four?
Yes, that's correct. Yep, and so that would have been a berated portion of that, because we transitioned out at the very end.
Right, okay, so twenty twenty-three is probably more accurate because it was
Correct, yep, that's correct.
And then twenty twenty-five actual is only at six hundred, we're projecting eight thirty. Do you think we'll reach eight thirty?
Yes, yes, I do. So we get about seventy-five thousand a month, so.
That was page eighty-one for us. Any other questions there?
You'll see, you will see two line items there for the Public Works Building for Facilities, which I mentioned before, very eloquently.
Okay, any other questions from the DIAS or Street Fund?
So we, we also have another line item for horticulture, this previous year that was included in roadside. And so we, we pulled out some of that for, for them to have their own line items, both for us as well as parks.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I have a question, question about beautification of the roadside, just generally, I guess with the medians and then like the roundabout at Harvard there. For the last while, we've been able to see the irrigation pipes and all that. Is there a plan to not see those?
Yes.
Great.
That was easy. We like simple answers.
One of the things about the Harvard One of the things about the Harvard Roundabout is we're, we're kind of tied to what Wash Dot wants. Uh, we would love to take some of those plants out of there, because it's way overplanted, and that's something that Dan is finding all over the city. So that's one of the things that we're gonna use some of these line items to capture where we can.
Anybody else? Not hearing any? Hey, I guess we're done with the streets fund.
If, Ben, before you move off, to address, uh, in part, one of Councilmember Spencer's earliest questions. You heard Ben talk about, part of the strategy for addressing this was creating a multi-tiered uh, classification where we have not only room for people to grow as their skillset builds, but we also have the opportunity to increase the salary to match some of our neighboring um, jurisdictions. But if I'm looking across the board at that particular classification, it is the most behind our neighboring peers by terms of percentage, by a significant amount. And so when you hear, what would that be, seventy-five percent attrition over some period of time, that is a direct, um, contributing factor to that.
And that's a mix of other municipalities versus private industry, that's a, that's a very highly in-demand skill to be able to do those, those kind of jobs. So we're definitely in competition, and we're trying to make ourselves a little bit more competitive.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I guess that was sort of my question, is do you feel like this budget is competitive in that specific position?
I think it's getting us there. I think a lot of times that we, the city has had to bring in people with very limited experience based on how much money we're offering. I think this helps us bring in folk, and, and we're such a small city, and in the past, we just haven't been able to give people that experience as quickly as we probably need to. And so I think this will help us bring in maybe those mid-level folks a little with, you know, three or four years of experience, whereas maybe they've only got one, you know, one to four, so this is, I think this is gonna help us grow our professional expertise, which is part of our strategic plan. And so that's kind of what we were thinking with this, and I think there's opportunities to do this in other divisions within public works, other places. We just have to kind of figure out what that position description looks like. We're just really starting with streets first. Because we do, this is really the difference between semi-skilled labor, skilled labor. We want skilled labor, we're gonna have to pay for it.
Councilmember Ball, and then Councilmember Spencer.
Okay, I don't know where we are, because I had to excuse myself for a minute, but, um, on, I guess, are you on page, um, eighty-two? Is that the same numbering you have?
Yep, I think so.
Okay, um, the first two items, five eighteen, well, they're both ending twenty.
The facility ones.
Correct. Should, are those two different items?
They are.
Well, how come it doesn't say twenty instead of ten under, when it's totaled?
Uh, well, that's a good question. Well, one of them's for supplies only, I'm not sure how the budgeting system.
Shouldn't that be twenty, Kyle?
Uh, yeah, it should.
Think.
They're twenty, yeah.
Hence the need for the new accounting system.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a different, it's a different code though, Kyle, so I don't know.
Well, well played, Kyle.
This is under supplies.
Twenty, right?
So I don't know if it's counted elsewhere. Yeah, and, and when you insert, so five-one-eight is a central services, uh, accounting code, and five-four-two is our streets accounting code. We are, these are streets uses, and so, um, a lot of times when you mix up those codes, central services wants to live in parks and facilities, um. So I honestly, um, I'll have to investigate.
The total, though, under five eighteen centralized services, forty-five thousand dollars, and that is correct.
Right.
Right, right, right. Okay, and then, um, roadway supplies, striping, that's five four two three oh three one oh one. Okay, then, on the next page, roadway striping, again, five four two three oh four eight oh six. Why is it on two different pages and it, isn't it the same thing?
It appears to be. Well, so we've got different types, so we had, we do striping. Yeah, I'd have to look at that.
And so one of them is a supplies line item, and the other is a services line.
We were to pay somebody to do it.
Yeah.
And in the past, we've done a lot more of that, like we pay the county to come and do all the lines on the road, whereas we go and do all the crosswalks.
Oh.
So that's, I think, I remember them coming by a couple of weeks ago and doing the city in a couple of days. So we pay the county as a professional service, just like we do traffic lights, and a few other things the county comes and does for us as a professional service.
Okay, and then, um, five four two three oh four one oh one. Um, the ten thousand moving forward to fund portion of city logic software included in the pavement master plan, which was completed, right?
Yep.
Do we have to pay that every year?
Yeah, so that's the software part, that's the maintenance software portion. Um, so we paid for them to come and scan and do some analysis for us. And then part of that fee, that fee this year was paid for out of the pavement master plan. Moving forward, we've got to pay for it out of other funds, so that's a portion of it uh, gets paid out of that fund, and the rest of it gets paid out of the stormwater fund, which go over here.
So we do that every?
That's an annual maintenance software.
But I mean, so this whole thing we did this year with the roads and?
We'll do that every five years. We'll re-scan every five years, but this is an annual subscription to the software, so that we can both use it to master plan as well as maintain the roads, similar to what we use uh, for facilities, we use Asset Planner, this is kind of like that but for roads, stormwater and things like that, uh, street signs, stuff like that.
Okay, um, okay, and then on page eighty-four, um, let's see, what is it? Five nine one nine five seven zero zero zero.
Yep.
What are we leasing here, is that the equipment?
So that's our big construction equipment, so the grader, the two, uh, loaders, the stuff that we use for, mostly for snow plowing, dirt.
Okay, um, and then interest and other debt service, uh, eighteen one, what is it? What are we paying?
So we, we have a three-year lease, and it's, it's a, it's a governmental lease with a buyback option. That's the percentage each year that is in interest.
Okay.
For those leases.
Big equipment again.
Same, same equipment, just a different type of car, it's got a different system. Our wonderful spring brook system.
Okay. Uh, I think we had Councilmember Spencer had a question?
Yeah, so, uh, just going back to the, uh, you know, the, the issue of, you know, hiring more skilled workers, that, that sort of thing. So I'm just curious whether this is an issue across the board, because that's the way we're applying these increases, right? We're, we're adding the cost of living plus an, an additional three percent plus the two-step. So I guess, you know, the, the initial question was, are, are we having issues with attrition? The initial response was, well, not really, but in your department, yes, really, right?
No, specific division.
Yeah, exactly. So, so I, I'd be curious whether, whether we ought to get a little bit more granular, or are we going against some sort of law that prevents us from, uh, doing that, rather than just doing a blanket eh, addition on, on top of the cola?
So what I would say in response to that is, I, I would be in, in favor of doing a, a more targeted salary survey for some of these as I look across the comparables that are more significantly behind than others. Um, but in, in terms of the strategy that we undertook to address, uh, the shortfall that we saw this year, um, the, the strategy that we elected to adopt was, uh, the, the multi-tiered approach. Um, and the across-the-board, um, increase, uh, for all positions. Because when you look at all positions, um, they are, uh, classified as behind and behinder. Um, and so that's kind of what it boils down to.
Sure, yeah.
New, new word? Anything else on, on streets ops? Okay, tourism promotion, these are the easier ones. We, does anybody need a refresher on what, what the one, fund one fifteen is for, or where it comes from? There's not, or any questions on it, if not, we'll just skip. Nobody? Okay. Tourism promotional capital fund resources, this is the one that Kyle was talking about earlier, Kyle, let you kind of review that again.
Yeah, uh, so, uh.
Oh, sorry, uh, eighty-eight, sorry.
So we can see, uh, twenty twenty-six, uh, we are planning to end twenty twenty-six with uh, roughly six hundred and five thousand dollars in that fund. And so, um, absent of any other realistic use of these funds, it would be my recommendation, uh, that we execute a prepayment with Trailhead, uh, using these funds. Uh, we had, um, a couple of years ago, the hub approached us for potential uses, but we could not, um, we could not, um, contemplate or, or we could not get the R C W to comply with their intended use, and so that fell by the wayside. Yeah, so we tried, um, uh, we saw a partner in need, and we have these funds, and this is kind of what they're dedicated for. Um, they're, they're also dedicated to capital improvements that are designed to attract tourism, which is exactly what Trailhead does as well, and so.
So any questions on that? Okay, go ahead, Mayor for Tim.
So Kyle, um, so the five forty-five that's in for twenty twenty-five, you would be suggesting that we take the five hundred thousand out of that, but that's still gonna leave us with six oh five in twenty twenty-six, or what?
No, so this is another one where our, our basis of accounting, so this is mostly rollover. And so we contemplated late in twenty twenty-four potential uses for the hub that never materialized.
Right.
And so now the twenty twenty-five adopted is sitting there, we're not gonna expend any funds uh, in twenty twenty-five other than potentially Trailhead.
Right, so if, let's just say, and I assume you're gonna come to us with a budget or a change here in the next couple of weeks if we do this.
Yep.
Um, so let's say we pay the half million in the prepayment out of this fund. That's gonna, is that gonna take us down to, um?
Yeah, so we'll, yep, we'll draw that down, uh, to, uh, about, call it forty-five thousand, ending in twenty twenty-five. And then we'll gradually replenish that at about seventy-five thousand a year, maybe a little bit less.
Okay, so this just assumes that we're, th- these numbers on here assume that we're, for twenty-six, assume that we're not gonna make that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that just shows the available resources that we could use towards that end.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that one? Right, not hearing any. Term Promotion Fund, number three, number one seventeen.
Mayor, uh, just a quick question, so why wouldn't we just put the full five forty-five towards the prepayment? Is there a reason to leave the forty-five in there?
So I'll, I can get, um, clarification from the issuer on if we're allowed to pay in increments other than five hundred.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I thought we had to ask that same question last year, and I thought the answer was increments of five hundred.
Well, I think it's just smart to leave something in there, you know?
Sure, and it'll, and it'll, uh, it'll replenish, um, as we, to the tune of, call it about seventy thousand a year.
All right, Fund one seventeen. This goes to Visit Spokane.
Yep, so this is a passer. Yep, so.
I think that's money's going to very good use. Um, they were actually at the grand, the ribbon-cutting for the I H G Gardner Hotel, um, last week doing a promo video, and if any of you guys have not driven by that, I shouldn't say this is my marriage report, to see the renovations at what used to be the Comfort Inn, which was a major issue here for us.
Quality.
Quality Inn, sorry. Um, uh, yeah, it's, it's amazing the difference and the investment that, that these people put in it and get, get a tour. It's gonna be great resource for the hub, they can actually recommend it now for, for their teams and, um, so, so Visit Spokane was there, uh, doing a video to help kind of promote that, and I also heard that the Best Western is undertaking some renovations as well.
They are, so we are excited to get hopefully some interaction from our partner hotels on the lodging tax advisory committee uh, early next year.
Hopefully they'll have more traffic, which will see this, all of these funds increase as the clientele is is bettering, bettering.
So that, uh, was it the quality Inn, is that what it was? Eh, eh, the, the sketchy one?
Yeah.
So it's.
It's, it's now an I H G hotel named Gar- Gardner.
Uh-huh, and it's done?
Yeah, it's done.
Looks okay?
Oh, it looks wonderful.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
The rooms are all redone, the, everything's redone, they actually have a room, a meeting room that will seat, I think, forty-five people as well.
Nice.
And the pool's fixed after how, God knows how many years. Okay.
No bedbugs.
Yeah, so, sorry, I digress. Okay, restricted reserve, uh, there's really not a lot to say here, we are, um, by, uh, ordinance, um, need to keep, uh, fifteen per, fifteen percent-ish, uh, in there, um, and it's kind of been maintaining itself through the last couple of years. We did a major adjustment a couple of years back, but with the interest that it's gaining is pretty much covering that.
Correct.
And no expected changes needed to that. And as a reminder, those are for true emergencies only by action of council, that that can be accessed. Okay, REIT, number one, Kyle.
So, um, I think as, yeah, as we all are aware, um, REIT is the first quarter percent on real estate excise, uh, the real estate excise tax is the first quarter percent on the sale of real property, uh, these are our capital project funds, both three-ten and three-eleven, REIT one and REIT two. Uh, we tailor REIT one more for horizontal construction, uh, or REIT two as well, but you'll see in here, um, really heavy capital years for both REIT one and REIT two, um, and this isn't out of the ordinary, these funds fluctuate, uh, relatively frequently. And so you'll see, um, in, in years where we're not, where we, obviously we don't have capital projects, those funds will build up, um, and then we can attack several projects like we're, um, asking council to consider for, for twenty twenty-six. So we have several projects planned, both for REIT one and REIT two. Uh, REIT one, um, obviously we're gonna use a portion of that, uh, for the city hall redesign. And then, um, just to clarify, comment earlier, REIT two, we target the horizontal construction because REIT two is a little bit more narrowly construed on the allowable uses. Um, no, no, no like admin facility-type construction, um, whereas REIT one doesn't have that restriction.
So for kind of both of those combined, are there any questions on REIT one or two? Now, Mayor for Tim.
Kyle, uh, so if my math is right here, so far, we've got about four point four set aside for the city hall through these budgets, and I'm wondering
Yeah, that's correct.
More coming up here that we just haven't gotten to, but, um, but four point four seems like a pretty good start.
Exactly, and so we don't have any more, we will finish this project, and then obviously with any sort of retain, we're not gonna, we are, we're not gonna finish the project in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
And so the, I would say upwards of forty percent of that will be, uh, made in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
Anybody else on REIT one or two? Hey, hearing none. Move a couple pages here, sorry, guys. Okay, Street Capital Projects. Three twelve.
So we have, um, this is transitioned to kind of our heavy equipment, heavier equipment, the ones that we don't lease. Uh, so this is our repository for any surplus that we see in the streets funds, it's access to what's necessary for operating, uh, gets, uh, transferred to this, and then we tackle equipment items in the CFP through this fund.
Any questions on that one?
We're on page ninety-six, right?
Ninety-nine.
Oh.
Any questions? Not, we'll move on to well, Henry Kramer Road Project, which is done.
It's, so this is technically a dormant fund, Was that, has not closed out that project, um, and so with Kramer, you also with Connect Washington have Harvard improvements and Barker improvements as part of their larger Connect Washington improvement, um, contribution. And so with things like hydro seeding on the tail end, it may seem like that project's been completed for a couple of years. They don't close it out until they're absolutely sure that there isn't anything needed to come back, and so that, that just kind of sits dormant for a year or two, um, until they close that out.
Right, Harvard Road Mitigation Fund.
So yeah, no activity plans, so obviously these, uh, so our, our revenue is generated through impact fees for the area, obviously surrounding, uh, Harvard Road, and so obviously the heavier the use, the more impact fees uh, that are charged for, um, improvements, uh, to that area. And so this is another one where uh, we may not have activity for a year or two, and then, um, for now, we have one point two, one point three million to throw at a project and pay cash for that for these funds.
Any questions? Okay, Library Capital Fund.
Uh, so right, so this is largely, we were contemplating this as a, um, a relatively dormant fund. Um, I think there was some, um, uncertainty around. the measure that we're, the measure that was placed on the ballot. And so we have a consideration of capital outlay that may be designed and maybe something else that was included. We do not have anything planned for 2026 though.
And where the adopted transfers in are not happening.
Correct.
Do we?
Go ahead.
Do we have to make an amendment, a budget amendment for that to happen?
Or to not happen?
Or to not happen?
No. No, so we just, we do nothing because what, we would bring it back to you to execute it, but it's already provided for in the budget. So there's a couple of different touch points when we do the inter-fund transfers.
Okay.
Questions on Library Capital, munis, sorry, Capital Project Fund 311 Masters, Municipal Facilities Master Plan.
So we tackled a good chunk of that this year. Parks Master Plan, comprehensive planning activities are ongoing through 2026. And so those activities are obviously charged to this fund. And this doesn't have a designated revenue source out of one-off contributions that council makes either from REIT or General Fund.
Any questions? Right, Police Capital Fund.
So historically, the Police Capital Fund was funded, we had substantial donations for a couple of years from Rudeen. And then this will transition as, as you will see in the CFP, working towards accreditation and working towards long-term improvements to the PD facility. We have smaller CFP, I guess, expenses in the, in PD's portion of that year over year. And so this will help tackle whatever it can. And so we don't have any other really designated revenue source to PD Capital outside of those recent donations.
Yeah, follow up on that. I was surprised that we didn't we didn't get much, well, we didn't get any from Rudeen last year, so follow up on that. Community Messaging Fund. So we're back to this one again. So there was the decision last year to take some of that out and put it toward Library, right?
That's correct. Yep.
And, and with where we are today, the question is, okay, obviously, that's not happening at this point. Do we want to take that $100,000 and appropriate, appropriate appropriate it to a different fund or project? So we have this, we, we're gonna reduce it by 100,000, but now that's still there. Are there any thoughts on where that needs to go or does it stay? Open, sorry, no.
So, so real quick, I know we haven't really contemplated, or maybe we haven't, we just haven't seen it yet, the outside of the new City Hall. We've seen pictures of the inside of the new City Hall. Is there any intention to put a video board or something of that sort on the outside of the new City Hall along Mission?
Interesting.
I mean, obviously, we have the one down here that says, Welcome to Liberty Lake, and it flashes.
I think we've got an opinion coming.
So currently, none of that is involved in the City Hall design scope we've got with BCRA. I'm assuming at some point, we're gonna need some sort of sign out front. But we haven't, we haven't captured that within the design parameters at this point. And we're not really doing much to the outside besides cleaning it and maybe putting, taking off the legacy church and putting the City Hall on there.
Be an interesting place for another message board.
Absolutely.
Especially with all the, the traffic and whatnot, Library and PD and stuff. So, oh, well, I think I had Councilmember Ball first, then Councilmember Kennedy.
Actually, that's a good idea, but I was also thinking it can offset some of the expenses of the birthday party. Oh, offset some of the expenses of the birthday party?
I don't know if we can do that, Kyle, since it's a capital fund. Can we do that?
So the origin of these, of these funds was the General Fund. And so what we could do is if, if that was the route we wanted to go, we could just transfer these funds back to the General Fund. I, I don't know that we would attribute exactly this to exactly that, but since they would be unrestricted revenue at that point, you could make that, you could make that assumption.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Our recommendation is going to be based on, you know?
Can you get closer to your mic, please?
Thank you. Would be the transfer back to General Fund, so we don't have to get into a discussion what we could utilize that for now. We'll be looking at that this next year. And where we can get through our budget.
Well, just we want to make a, take a note on that when it comes to, unless somebody wants to make, make a motion now, if you guys are prepared to, to talk on that. Hold on, I'm asking a question. Or do we make a note of it and add that to our list of possible action items? I'm gonna go to Councilmember Dunn, because she already spoke.
I kind of value the principle of community messaging. I believe the ability for, you know, the city to provide information is an important objective. And I'd rather see some commitment to create more communication, retain, I guess, the budget just for that purpose.
Councilmember Ball, you're up again.
Well, if, if we did want to use it for signage at the new City Hall, like a reader board or whatever, it'd have to stay in here, wouldn't it?
That would be the best place for it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've had some people weigh in, some people not, Councilmember.
I'll just agree about the idea of leaving it there for community messaging.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So overall, it's sounding like the majority want to leave it. Right. All right. Hey, Underground Utility Fund, another one speaks for itself. Our annual contribution of $25,000 to help with the cost of undergrounding utilities. That amount has not changed over over the, how many years have we been doing this now? I've lost track, but I think it's been $25,000 a year for pretty much forever.
Yeah.
So that's what we left in the budget. Are there any questions on that? Hopefully, we'll have another opportunity soon to to spend some of that.
Yep.
Councilmember Ball?
So the revenue for this is just transferring in from the General Fund? There's no other, okay.
Yeah, we were able to use some of it when we did Trailhead.
Yeah.
We had the opportunity, and so we used a lot of it then to help with that expense. Made it, made it a lot more beautiful in that corner, getting rid of those lines. Hey, Building Contingency Fund. This is yet, this is another one where we talked about transferring out $100,000 to Library Capital. So again, this is another one that's kind of up for discussion with the council, what you want to do with that or leave it. You can see, Kyle, have we had any, I don't think we've had any expenses this year out of that, have we?
We have not. We haven't for a couple of years. And so we did, obviously, there was an issue with the library. Gosh, six or seven years, maybe longer.
Started this.
That's, that was the impetus behind creating, isolating some funds towards some improvements that we could not have foreseen so that we can just go tackle, tackle any sort of building deficiency that comes out, you know, surprises us throughout the year.
And this is prior to our asset management software as well. So that's really taken care of a lot of the maintenance issues that may have led to that. So is there any discussion on that 100,000? Is this, and this is another one, Kyle, we could move back to the General Fund?
Yeah, so during our discussions last year, we had redirected some of this towards the towards the Library Capital improvements. Just because during that discussion, we had not foreseen, obviously, you can't foresee what this was intended for, but the discussion was we are better able to adapt to any sort of issue that would surround facility failure. And so that the potential use of this fund going forward may not be there.
Mayor for Tim.
I, I would favor just leaving it as is and that way we've got 139,000 in the bank if we need to do something and have an emergency next year. And the next council can decide if it wants to use that funding for other purposes.
Yeah, and that could always be a budget amendment at some point if somebody decides to tackle that. So I'm not hearing anybody saying anything besides, leave it. All right. Trailhead Improvements Project Fund, Kyle.
So as you can see in here, revenue in is golf operations to the tune of 443,924. Debt service in 2026 proposed is the same. So you have single source in that payment out. Obviously, this contemplates no future prepayment, but based on subsequent discussions we have potentially with Tourism Capital, we would see this increased to 943,000.
Mayor for Tim.
So, two questions here, Kyle. So the the total amount that Golf Operations is bringing in is 2 million proposed next year, is that right? Well, you've got a big ending balance of 500,000.
Right.
So, so 1.5?
Yeah. And I, I would say that that is very conservative.
So I guess my question is, if it's bringing in so much, why don't we plan to pay it down more?
We can. And so I think that's the idea is that there is no need for Golf Operations to maintain an ending balance of anything more than a couple hundred thousand dollars. And so as as those ending balances continue to rise as a result of that increased revenue, all of that money will be shifted towards any potential prepayment of the bond.
And reiterate, just for those listening, the, the prepayment increments are?
So are 500,000 increments, yeah. But to that point, we could still transfer out in years that we don't necessarily prepay. We could transfer out 200,000, we could transfer out 300,000 into the Trailhead Improvements Fund.
To hold it aside.
To hold that, to hold that separate.
Questions on this fund? Nope, yes?
Well, I, I mean, I would just say that, you know, the hope is not only that we're making this bond payment, we're setting aside so we can prepay, but hopefully, we're starting to contemplate the fact that this building will degrade over time and we'll have to replace it and consider that we pay cash with, for that. But we have to have a plan in place. So right now, we're behind that plan. We're not even close to getting to the point where we're gonna pay it off quicker. So this is something to, to keep in mind with all the projects we have going on, that we want to pay for what we've got. We want to pay for the debt that we've got, but we also want to plan for the future so that, you know, I think, like I said in, in my original interview, you know, Christmas comes the same time every year. We know what, that we know how long this building's gonna last, so should start planning ahead.
All right, anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
Kyle, how much? See, I'm trying to figure out how I want to put this. Did we lose any revenue as a result of Chevalier's not being able to open for months after they thought they were gonna open?
Yes, we did.
What was that amount?
You know, it's hard to know what, because we, we'll get a percentage of their gross sales. So that one's really hard, but about $45,000.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on then to Stormwater Utility Fund. I think there's really not a lot to talk about here. What happened to the lights or is it just me? Did the lights just dim? Okay, did we not pay the bill? My eyes are going. Is there, are there any questions on Stormwater Utility? Aquifer Protection.
So for our purposes, Stormwater Utility and Aquifer Protection are almost identical. Based on the infrastructure that we have here, we are protecting the aquifer. We don't discharge into any bodies of water.
And you see the, the CFP item listed there. That's planned. Okay, we're actually doing pretty good tonight. We want to try to get through Golf Operations and then call it a night after that and then maybe skip next, maybe skip Thanksgiving. Giving week. Maybe, go ahead, Councilmember Ball.
Oh, no, no, I'm, no, I'm just flapping my hands around. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so Golf Operations, you've got your, got your summary sheet here on the front. I don't see Chris here, but Kyle, I know you can answer all those questions.
So yeah, outside of the addition, the request for an additional officer, we, I can, for, for public safety, this is our only other contemplation of additional full-time staff. And it is a direct result of the potential revenue that we are losing because we just do not have the capacity to meet the demand of, of what they're seeing day in and day out at Trailhead.
Good problem to have. We're busy and we need more people. Councilmember Kennedy?
So you have potential lessons, you have golf events, you have just generally an inability to, I guess, meet, and Chris would be able to expand, expand on this much better than I can. But you have people going elsewhere, if there's a waiting list for any number of different events, especially, so the simulators, there, we have we have waiting lists for the simulators and then they'll just go somewhere else for that.
But adding a body, though, isn't not gonna help that. It's a capacity, isn't that a capacity issue?
Oh, that's a capacity specifically for like the leagues. And so if we, if we have more staff that can accommodate more leagues, then we will realize additional revenue.
Okay, I, okay, go ahead, keep, go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Am I interpreting the golf pro, this is an additional golf pro or just an employee?
So yeah, the golf pro is a, they are a designation by USGA. And so they're not like what Chris is. They're not like the head golf pro. Their, USGA designates a golf pro as this person that has passed this test or has achieved this certification. And so that would be one of them.
Any other questions on that part of it, if we want to get into, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Oh, do, do we have any idea what the revenue increase we're expecting as a result of hiring? Are, are we just covering costs or how much more above, above and beyond? Because at some point, you know, I don't know that we should be in the business of golf personally, but, you know, we are. So then it becomes a question of, are we just growing for the sake of growing? Or how much incremental income are we looking at?
So I, I cannot speak exactly to that. I will be more than happy to invite our head pro, Chris, to that. He, I think, like some other areas that we've embraced, has a very data-driven model on what exactly our return on investment of that is going to be. And he's, he, he's telling us that we sorely need it.
If you can ta- take those couple notes for him.
I will do that. Yep. Yeah.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. When it comes to the golf, I'm, I'm over the courtesy of the city increase each year. And it's great that we were able to put the money into the, the building and make the changes that we've been able to do. But I think it's important to realize that enterprise fund, I think, tends to get lost in the city. Enterprise fund is strictly designed that if we're using tax, such as tax money for an enterprise such as that, it is very clear that has to pay for itself. And does say very clearly, apparently, it's not long, so I'm sure somebody would jump into that, that we have to charge fees sufficiently to cover the expenses of it, which also should include maintenance, as time goes down. I'm always concerned that we show a beginning balance on the golf, when the beginning balance should be revenue left over over expenses. And in reality, it's not helping the money. Here, we're subsidizing it through the General Fund. And I've said it for years, I don't have the sound of that. I honestly, I don't. It's an asset of the city, it's a beneficial asset of the city. But I think it's very important that citizens and also the council, future council realize that it has to charge fees sufficiently, the paper itself, which includes the restaurant, because that is an enterprise fund also. And it always should have been a separate one, because we have a separate contract on that. So I think it's important moving forward that we understand that if it's in a deficit, we can handle that because of the act of the business. I just get concerned that it sort of gets stuck the way that it says, well, it's taking money. In reality, it is not, but it's not here for itself. Thank you.
And so, yeah, and I, and obviously, I think we've had these discussions a number of times. For many years there, that, that assessment was absolutely accurate. I think we were using Um, parks maintenance to fund some of those activities. Um, the tide has turned on that. And very significantly, and so um, the decision was made, uh, uh, obviously, as you guys know. To invest capital into that um building and using um funds that weren't as a direct result. Of those fees charged, and that that is allowable, but I, Councilmember Kennedy makes a great point that, you know, we we provide this service, we charge fees. Our goal should be to cover the cost of all of those um fees with the, with the uh. With the revenue that's that's provided.
I think we had Councilmember Spencer next, or did I, oh, I forgot to mark you off, sorry. Um, who was for, Councilmember Ball?
Well, I personally, I think that business has picked up at Trailhead and will continue to do so, and I think part of it is because people. Now see this beautiful new facility, whereas before, if you play golf there, that building was a a dump. I mean, it was, it was ancient and. To address your concerns about deterioration, it's still a brand-new building. I don't think we need to be looking at worrying about anything breaking down in the near future. And now with this new building and this new facility, and with the hotels now being. Debugged and and uh cleaned up, we have more opportunity to get more, I would think, more um. Tournaments, you know, from outside, because now people have a place to stay that is safe. And a nice place to go to play golf in a nice building. I see it all as very positive, and so I don't understand all the negativity around this facility in particular, and um. Uh, I I just don't think we need to be so negative about it. It's a good thing.
Thank you. Mayor Tim?
I think the point that Councilmember Kennedy was trying to make, and Kyle, maybe you can add some more flavor onto this. Is that if you remove the beginning balances that we've had each and every year. So coming up in twenty twenty six, we've got a beginning balance of five hundred thousand four hundred. If you just look at the year-on-year revenue versus expenses, there is not a match. It's under, because the beginning balance keeps transferring over year after year after year, which, you know, if we're gonna bu- budget that way, fine, but the point is. Year to year, January first to December thirty first, what is the amount of revenue that's coming in the door versus what is the amount of revenue that we're spending? And so that is, I think, the question uh that Councilmember Kennedy was pointing out.
Um, let me go to Councilmember Dunn to see if I found yet.
Uh, I think we're lucky to have Chris Johnson as a pro, and the work in this pro shop and the development of the organization is remarkable. Uh, I think the golf course is an asset and a service to the community. I believe funding it in support of that is part of our obligation as a city to provide services. So I'm grateful we got this golf course in operation.
All right, um, go ahead, Councilmember.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't see this as as negative, and it is a brand-new building, but it is in the process of securing once you're finished. We end up putting over seven trillion dollars in this building, and by the time that we bought it, to the time we started, we have it. We never collected one dollar for preventive maintenance, not one. That's why we were at a point, we had to do what we've done it. I've used a term for years that there's an intrinsic value to that golf course. And I've said repeatedly, and I'm always amazed how it's taken as a negative, that I don't care if it hasn't been funded. I have never been concerned about it, because the intrinsic value is there, so. The goal was to do everything we can to put it in a position that it does make fun. But to look, close a blind eye that we don't, we have an obligation to play fair in the future, is really foolish for us today. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Ball, you're next.
Oh, I forgot what I was gonna say, so.
Okay, it's all right. All right, so are there any parti- in particular line item questions for the Golf Operations Fund? Which would be starting for the expense side on one fourteen, Mayor Tim.
I guess my question would be, maybe Kyle, you could, or have Chris get back to us on this. If we're gonna add another, was it assistant pro?
Golf lead.
Golf lead.
Yeah.
We're gonna add another golf lead. What are we expecting in revenue as a result of that?
Yep, that's the question we're. Okay, all right, so um, are there any? Hold on, I'm ordering.
I don't.
You good? Okay, um, are there any particular line item questions, and if Kyle can't answer, we will continue to make those notes and have Chris um back at the next budget meeting to answer. Going once. Going twice, it's only two pages, okay. All right, we got a couple more small funds here. Um, unemployment fund, not really much to talk about there. We keep it funded at fifteen thousand dollars in case we can, because we are self. Um, self-insured for unemployment. Any questions? Nope. Uh, medical reimbursement, sort of the same thing, we keep it fully, fully funded.
Yep.
Anybody? Nope. Um, we have our fund pass-through funds, we've got the um. Stuff from the state, because the custodial funds and strict pass-throughs, we put out what we get in. Nothing very fancy about that. So there's no questions on page one nineteen, that's the end of the funds, so we have, obviously, there's appendix and stuff like that, so um. So we have on our schedule, oh, sorry, so, um, meeting on the eighteenth, we're planning on having Lisa back, we can go through. Her department and the capital facilities plan again. Um, and then my suggestion would be, since we've got that meeting, we probably don't need one the week of Thanksgiving, we can make that final determination then, but it's looking that way. Would be my guess. And then we'll, hopefully, we can then supplement um some of the other ones, maybe in December, that we may or may not need, or shorten them and add some of the governance manuals back to that as we get there. Yes.
Can I make a a suggestion that we um. Switch the November twenty fourth meeting to the governance manual?
You'd be okay with that, because I know uh, uh, Councilmember Kurtz is the one who has a. Potential conflict that week, right?
Oh, if it's on the twenty fourth, I mean, that's.
Oh, twenty fourth, yeah, good, yeah, okay. Is everybody okay with that, switching the twenty fourth to the governance manual?
Yeah.
Not hearing any opposition, we can make that note, thank you. And just make sure, you know, a special meeting, we don't need all the other things on the agenda that we've got tonight. Okay?
Good night.
Yeah.
We're not to, are we to the next, are we to the next?
Well, that, yeah, I'm getting there, I'm going through the, it's, um, since we were talking about budget, I just want to touch on that, so if there's nothing else tonight on the workshop for the budget. Uh, we have no, no general business items, ten or eleven, council comments, twelve. Unless you just want to move, wait until afterwards, are there any council comments at this time? Go ahead, Councilmember Ball.
Didn't you want to talk to us about something?
Well, that's what's, uh, it's after the meeting, it's not council business.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I just need counsel and the staff that's here to stay after for a couple minutes. No, it's not council business, just information. Um, so we have no council comments with this section, no public hearings, no resolutions, but we do have an ordinance. Number three twelve.
Ordinance three twelve, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, levying the regular property taxes for the City of Liberty Lake, Washington. Spokane County for the year commencing January first, twenty twenty six, to provide revenue for the provision of city services as set forth in the city budget.
Okay, so this is first read, um, can do a little discussion if you want. I put in the budget, no, no change, no, uh, no, no increase. Um, that should bring our rate down a smidge, I forgot, I put it in my budget letter, I forgot what.
Yeah, so eighty-eight, seventy-one, so a fraction of eighty-eight cents down to eighty-five for. I I have it in here, but down to roughly eighty-five cents.
So, so the rate per thousand will be going down, probably won't offset any increases in values, but we're trying to do our part with that, and then we get the additional. Property tax associated with our growth.
Correct.
On top of that. So, um, so if there's no discussion on that, we'll just go on. We have no emergency ordinances. Um, and here we are at sixteen and a half for council comments.
This is my apologies, I made a mistake, I completely. Did not see twelve, so I apologize, no, I have nothing further.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Okay, you like that? Um, introduction of upcoming agenda items, we got uh touched on the workshops here. Um, we got the three, I mean, four of them on the eighteenth, um, twenty-fourth, we have moved to the governance manual. Tentative budgets slash maybe governance manual meetings on the second and the ninth. Um, and then a bunch of others that are still um, still TBD, so. Councilmember Kurtz?
So we were talking about a couple of the special meetings we have, um, the vacant council seat.
Yes.
And so trying to figure out how, where we should work on fitting that in, because I think we had talked about. Um, adopting the budget before we had somebody on, so that's not their first vote.
We, we had previously discussed having that special meeting on December the ninth, it's not listed that way here, but that was the purpose of that.
The ninth from the budget to.
To the uh.
Council.
Yeah, the inter- the interviews of the potential.
Okay.
Uh, council applicants, or the council applicant.
And then do we have applicants?
One?
We, we have as of right now, two.
Oh, two, two, okay.
Quick question.
Yes.
We were going back and forth between the eighth and the ninth, I'm gonna be out of town on the ninth.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if Monday, the eighth would work.
Let me check their calendars real quick. Sunday, eight? Oh, gosh, that's an old calendar line, I'm not okay with that. Eight instead of the night? I'm okay with that, how's everybody else look? Okay. Everybody else look okay on the eight? Linda, you good? Are you looking?
You good, Linda?
Okay, all right, so let's shoot for the eighth instead of the ninth.
Got it noted.
Yep.
Perfect.
Can I ask a question about one? Go ahead, Councilmember.
So the eight is the interviews?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay.
For one of the future budget workshops, wh- whichever one it may be. Um, if you'll recall the slides that we reviewed at the outset, those had individual uh line items that reflected budget requests. That we've talked about in part here. Um, the question is, do you want the supporting documentation behind those that show all of the ROI? Projected ROI, the the mandate alignment, the all of the other, the inflation impact, all of that stuff. Uh, it's, it's fairly thick, but it would be a insert into your current budget binder, if you want to see all of that backup documentation, we could produce it and put it in there for you.
Go ahead.
I would love that. I'm also wondering if we could come up with something um that shows if. You guys were doing it, what are like the five things we could cut? And what would be the consequences for cutting those things?
On that list or altogether?
Well, I would just say altogether.
Okay.
Yeah, so that way, you know, as we're trying to balance here, what, what, you know, the pluses and minuses are for some of these increases or some of the changes. If you had to say, okay, you know, if we said we want to cut a million out, what would we cut?
Yep.
So we can go from there, and then, you know, maybe we just decide based on what you come back with, that that we shouldn't do those things, but I would at least like to have it in front of us.
Got it. Anybody else? All right, um, next we have uh citizen comments, so once again, we are up to citizen comment period, if there's anybody. In this person or online who'd like to make a citizen comment, I will go through the rules, if not, I won't. Uh, I'm not seeing anybody jumping to the podium here. Um, anybody online, Kyle? No, no, okay, so no citizen comments, we have no executive session, before we adjourn, I will ask that the council and the staff who are here. That stay after and would um get together in the conference room next door just for about two minutes, uh, I'd appreciate it, uh, if that were adjourned.